This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is called to order. We'll call please.
Chair Schwartz.
Present.
Vice Chair Nudes.
Here.
Commissioner Cale.
Here.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Village.
Here.
Adam Corr.
Thank you. First item business is public comment. Public comment is anything that's not on the agenda, including consent items. Just remember that in mind, a public comment should be limited over to items which the city commission has supervision, control or jurisdiction or advisory power.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening.
I'm Leslie Fiedle Livingston Chamber of Commerce. And I just gonna pop up here for just a minute. First of all, I'm gonna leave this with Grant, but why isn't announced after all these years, we have a brand new board. We have one existing chair in her final year and we had a bunch of people term out, so we have a brand new board, seven people. Very proactive, very looking forward to working with on the city and county. And on that note, we have had a few more actually online right now. So just wanted to bring up, I know that Mark is not here, but the family days for the Yellowstone Gateway Museum, because the issues in museums having is on March 29th from 10 to 1 Saturday, and they're gonna hold it at the library. So that'd be kind of a fun event. And again, let's skip candy things. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up is that our spring job fair is with Department of Labor and Industries, which are office has been very busy lately with a lot of folks coming through looking for new careers, jobs, veterans, everybody we've been working with. So our, it is April 19th at the Park County Fairgrounds, which will be under construction, so it'll be fun. But tend to like every spring. So we're looking forward to another good year. And thank you very much.
Thanks, Lutler. Any other public comment in the room? Seeing none, we'll go online. Any public comment online? Please raise your hand or come off mute.
Erica Stone.
You got one?
Yeah, Erica Stone.
Erica Stone? You would like to make public comment? You're off mute, Erica.
Having public hearing.
Well, I guess. Okay, I don't see no other public comments. One more time in the room, public comments? Public comments are closed. Move on to consent items. Does anybody on the consent items have a conflict of interest or an expertise that they need to disclose on this? Commissioner Willage?
I have a conflict of interest with item F.
Okay, as Chair, I'll pull that.
And I will
Right.
Thank you.
With that, do I have an approval for consent items to through G excluding F?
Folks already, I'll make a motion to approve consent items A through E and G.
Second?
Second.
That was you, Tori?
Yes.
Motion by Cale, second by Lyons. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay. Consent item F. Do I have a motion on consent item F?
I'll make a motion to approve consent item F.
Motion by Nudes, second?
Oh, second cut.
Second by Cale. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is proclamations. Proclamation of City of Livingston City Commission, declaring March 20th, 25 as Spring Equinox Day, Livingston, Montana. Whereas the spring equinox, also known as a viral, vernal equinox occurs each year on or around March 20th, marking the transition from winter to spring and the renewal of life. And whereas this celestial event takes place when the sun crosses this celestial equator, aligning directly above the Earth's equator, creating a day and night of nearly equal length for all regions of the world. Whereas the word equinox is derived from the Latin word equus, equal and nox, night, symbolizing the balance of light and darkness that this event represents. Whereas the spring equinox has been observed and celebrated by cultures around the world for centuries, as a time of rebirth, renewal, and the awakening of nature, inspiring traditions that honor the changing of the season. And whereas in the northern hemisphere, this event signifies a lengthening of days and the warming of temperatures as the earth tilts towards the sun, bringing opportunities for growth, renewal, appreciation of the natural world. Whereas the arrival of spring serves as a reminder of the beauty, resilience, and interconnectedness of our environment, encouraging all residents of Livingston to embrace this season of renewal with gratitude and stewardship of the land. Now therefore be resolved on behalf of Livingston City Commission by Quentin Schwartz, Chair, do proclaim March 20, March 20th, 2025 to be Spring Equinox Day in Livingston, Montana. Further, I encourage all residents to take a moment to observe and appreciate the changing of the seasons, the balance of nature, and the promise of new beginnings. We have no scheduled comment. Action items, action item A, presentation of Reservoir Park Geo Design Workshop Report. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The item before the commission this evening is a presentation of the results of the Reservoir Park Geo Design Workshops that were led by Alec from CB Studio. And I will invite Alec to share the results.
Hello. Hello. I'm Alec Antic of CB Studio, Principal Architect and Owner. Thanks for having me. I'm excited to walk you through this and share how the process of the Reservoir Park Geo Design Workshops went. Did that full screen maybe, Grant? Or yeah, that works as well. Through. So just a little background on geo design methodology. It's kind of a planning methodology for those of you that may be unfamiliar with it. It's basically a collaborative kind of method for structured discussion of spatial and city policies, spatial planning and city policies. So utilizing maps and stakeholder input, you analyze current conditions of a site, a given site, bring stakeholders together. Design professionals, geographic sciences, information technologies, and then of course, the people of the place into the same room and you talk about different scenarios and build consensus on ideas. And on, so the process for Reservoir Park was a non-binding pre-planning exercise, really structured to gather community input and establish a citizen-led design direction for Reservoir Park. This process was included online map-based surveys that were disseminated to the community and two in-person geo design workshops using the Geo Design Hub online platform, which is basically just a vessel for these negotiations and tracking these planning efforts. Some key goals established at the start of this were to achieve greater community engagement than previous planning efforts for the park and develop consensus for development moving forward for Reservoir Park and as well as demonstrate geo design as a beneficial approach for planning and development in Livingston. This is the location of Reservoir Park for those in the room and online that may not know where it is. It's on the north side of Livingston. It's about a five and a half acre parcel of city-owned land, currently designated as a city park. Park is surrounded by single-family residences, HRDC housing, and a couple of other city-owned parcels. Currently used as a informal park primarily by the immediate residents in the area. It lacks signage, amenities, and connection to other parks and trails in Livingston. So moving on, the online survey. It was anonymous, self-explanatory. Did post a few help sessions at the farmer's market and a meeting on September 25th to help residents figure out the survey. These were online from August to October. And then these responses from these surveys that you can see an example of at the top of the screen there form the base elements for the workshops, the base design elements. We had 202 survey responses, which was more than I was anticipating. So a lot of good engagement with the survey. Couple of themes you can see in that word cloud there, that hierarchy of that word cloud. All of the responses were reviewed with City of Livingston staff as well as participants just to review feasibility and general financial considerations, although a budget has not been established for this. So the workshops, there is two workshops. Participants were divided into groups of five to eight people per group. I guided them through a process to express their ideas and negotiate with each other to reach a consensus kind of as a group for a design option. And then the Geo Design Hub software tracked and managed all of those kind of give and take changes and compromises along the way. The key themes for these workshops are listed right there. We had nine of them, ranging from wayfinding to kind of fencing. First workshop was October 23rd. We had 16 participants. 10 people, you know, people were in and out. Hard to kind of schedule these with weekdays when people have very busy schedules, but 10 people stayed around for the whole workshop. So we had two, two primary groups, Group A, which was the neighborhood residents and Group B, which was the larger Livingston community. So they went through the design process, presented to each other, and then we agreed to continue it on to workshop two, which had a lot more participation, which we divided up into four groups. The original group, Group A and B remain the same. Group C was another kind of larger Livingston community group, and then Group D was the immediate residents as well. So decided to split them up because of the differing perspectives on what each group really wanted, so we could find some compromise in the middle. These resulted in two different negotiated design proposals. And the images over there are just kind of an example of those options, those design options side by side between the two groups. And the next slides are the compiled designs. This is between Group A and B. You know, due to the constraints of the city water infrastructure that's up there, the site was generally divided into three zones. You've got the east zone, the middle zone, where the water storage is, and then the west side of the park. The east side, there was a lot of compromise and consensus, or yeah, sorry, consensus found on keeping this as natural as possible. Maybe enhancing it with some, you know, drought tolerant plants of demonstration garden. There's a lot of people that advocated for that, both from the immediate residents as well as the larger community, as well as maintaining or enhancing the connectivity of those trails and kind of revamping those trails to make them more usable for a wider swath of the public. In the middle, this is kind of the utilitarian area of the site. Most people wanted parking, off-street parking in this zone. Things like restrooms or a water fountain could be placed here as well. And then the west side of the site is the more active side of the site being recreation and, you know, picnic hangout spots. And then if we go to the next slide, this group negotiated back and forth on including a small children's bicycle pump track. There was never like a full consensus built around this, but with that side of the site being 1.3 acres, there's plenty of room for both a play structure as well as a small pump track for, that's catered more towards small children. So moving on to kind of like closing thoughts and summary. If you want to go to the next slide. You know, really maintain the natural features. That was very prevalent in every group, which was great to see kind of everyone come together and support that. The connectivity, which I mentioned before, as well as the off-street parking, you know, the bare bones stuff. Some, some things that didn't necessarily make it into the process of tracking these changes and designs through the Geo Design Workshops were like policies for off-leash dog areas, enhanced pedestrian safety, safety around the park. So speed bumps, you know, reduce speed limits, and then ensuring the park is ADA accessible. So the next steps moving forward, kind of more towards the implementation side would be to organize a steering group for that final design implementation. You know, this could be a combination of City of Livingston, staff, nonprofits, or community groups and private residents as well. You know, defining the funding and budget will be key to see if some of these design suggestions from the community align with that. And then as well as the maintenance requirements and maintenance responsibilities. So engaging the design professional, once those first three points are established, it's kind of that, that next step to align with the budget and maintenance plan as well as the new Parks Master Plan that's currently being created. So. Any questions?
Any clarifying questions at this juncture? Or open up for public comment? How about a motion?
I'll move to receive a file of Geo Design Workshop Report and Director City Manager to pursue the common themes.
Second?
Second.
Second by Willage, second by Lyons. Okay, we'll open a public comment. Anybody in the room, public comment? On the Geo Design Workshop Report. State your name and address.
Chairman Hayes. Hayes.
Hayes is online. You might want to clarify that you're doing in the room first.
Well, Hayes, we're doing in the room first.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hang on one minute, Hayes. Rachel Jones. Do you need my address? Do your work address if you're sure, Executive Director of Farm School. Former Parks and Trails Committee, rest in peace. So I was surprised not to see any community garden features in your schematics. And I know that I did take the survey and I thought it was really nicely done. And I do appreciate all the time and effort that you guys all put into it too, you know, all of the marketing at the markets and around town and everything. I think it's a really nice product that you created. So thanks a lot for doing that. But again, I was really surprised not to see any community garden features. And with all of the public parkland that we have in Livingston, I would like you all to consider adding to that some, some local food or urban agriculture features. So I am the Executive Director of Farm School, Park County. And in addition to teaching kids where food comes from and growing food with them and transforming school food systems, we also operate Livingston's only community garden. It's outside of Lincoln School downtown. And over the past few years, we've had an overwhelming response to interest in the community garden. We operate only 27 beds and they're very affordably rented to community members, households, and community organizations. It's really become a hub downtown. It's really getting pretty busy during the summertime. It's a really nice place for community members to gather. The waiting list is getting really long, and that's showing that there's more interest in that. And I think that, that also, if it's the city's intent to do more infill downtown, there may be more and more community members around town who don't have that space at home. And, you know, I think we all know the community or the benefits to getting dirt under your nails, knowing where your food comes from. I also want to point out that Reservoir Park could be, could be a potential good location for that because there is some lower income housing in that neighborhood too. So I know that there's all kinds of constraints and considerations to make when you're planning parks like that. And I want you to know that Farm School would be happy to be at the table with you to figure that out. And I would look forward to figuring it out with you.
Any other public comment in the room? Seeing none, we'll go online. Any public comment online? Hayes, feel free to come off mute. Just state your name.
Here, thank you. Hayes Goosey, 203 Blue Hair and Drive here in Livingston. I would have raised my hand. I'm usually not technologically challenged, but I couldn't quite figure out how to get it done on Zoom. So just wanted to say thanks to the city manager and the contracting and consulting agency for taking the time to put forth the effort to hear from a lot of different sides of how we could come together on use of Reservoir Park. So appreciate that. Appreciate the efforts with that. I wanted to mainly just throw my name out as I would, if the steering committee is formed, I would happily be on that steering committee as one of the representatives of the community that surrounds Reservoir Park. We've got a small group of us together and I interact with them on a frequent basis. So could certainly bring a collective voice from many of the neighbors and residents that are stakeholders bordering the park or very close to the park and have some valuable input with that. So with that, thanks again. And again, steering committee, I would throw my name and the hat to be on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Hayes. Anybody else online would like to give public a comment? Come off mute, wave your hand. Seeing none? Comment is now closed. Commissioners? Anyone? Speak up? Make a comment?
I think it's pretty part. I mean, I've been up there a bunch. I got friends that are up in the area and it'd be nice to see sidewalks and access and parking and more established, I'll say, city park. I do also like the idea of keeping it fairly natural there too. That is important to maintain our natural flora and fauna as well. But no, I think this looks great. It's good, good steps.
Thank you, Commissioner Willage. Anyone else?
I'll go. I think it seems like the process that, that got to the design that is presented to us was pretty thorough. I, with that said, it's interesting to hear the idea about city or community gardens. I wonder if the discussion of this park is necessarily the best time to consider community gardens? I mean, I think there's probably a lot of opportunities throughout all the public parks in Livingston for you know, a community asset like that. That said, maybe this is the best opportunity because we're talking about developing it. So anyway, I'm not sure if, if you know, mandating or what would be the appropriate kind of way to consider that suggestion from the public? It, I, I recognize that it's a critical community asset that, you know, if those, those wait times are accurate, that's shows there's a lot of interest in that. So I'm open to that suggestion. And also open to more careful consideration of where might be the best place to have a community asset like that. So. That's all I have for now.
Commissioner?
Let's see. I agree with a lot of what Commissioner Lyons has to say. I appreciate the city manager and staff and the consultant leading this process. I think that was really great to be able to bring all these folks together and hear what they have to say and work to find some consensus amongst them. And I think that seems like a really cool way to plan a park that has nothing going on yet, you know, from the beginning. I again, agree with Commissioner Lyons. I think the idea, I love the idea of the community gardens and it sounds like that's a need that we have, but yes, is this, is this the best place or there are other places? You know, it's this something that we can, I guess, Mr. Gager, I guess I would ask you like, what are you looking for? Like, we obviously made a motion, but really like, what are you looking for from us for tonight? You know, it's, do you want? I don't know that us mandating something when there's been this process is the right thing to do, but what does it look like? The process look like moving forward, perhaps is my question.
Well, from here, you know, I think we would be inclined to follow Alex's recommendations to create a steering committee and advance the design, which, you know, I think it's important to remember that Alec highlighted the areas of consensus. But I wouldn't take that to mean that those are the only items that could possibly exist in that park after improvements are contemplated. Contemplated with the steering committee and community members. So, you know, a community garden may be suitable there. It's just simply wasn't one of those items of consensus that was widely brought up in discussions. So I guess along way in saying, I appreciate the motion that is out there and, you know, if it passes, we will move these consensus items forward, but there may be other items that make it into the final design as well.
I love the idea of a steering committee that is made up of broad group of stakeholders, including neighbors and other park users or other organizations that may help within the park. So I think I like all those ideas. So thanks. Thanks for leading this process.
Anything?
Yes. I'll start with thank you to the Parks and Trails Committee that initially pushed forward. Gosh, was it how many years ago? Four, five, five years ago. Thanks, Jamie. Five years ago that we should do something with this park. Because I think that's where it first started, at least in my memory. So thank you for getting the conversation going. I know it wasn't always easy. But thank you. We also did set aside some money as a commission towards this park, even though I'm sure it's not the final budget. But do you remember how much we set aside, Mr. Gager, just for the public?
You know, off the top of my head, that escapes me. You know, off the top of my head, that escapes me, but I do know in addition to the budget, we do have some materials that have been donated.
I want to say twenty thousand? No? Fifty? Fifty thousand? Okay, Jean Marie. I'm trusting her memory in the back, former chair of the parks, really many. Thank you. It's been a minute. Thank you for remembering that number. And I don't not remember it because it's not important. It's important. I just don't remember it because numbers. Lots of numbers in the last five years. So thank you for getting it started. I'm also grateful to Alec for moving forward finding some consensus because there's been a lot of competing ideas over the last five years. Really appreciate your expertise. I do believe that our growth policy talks about community gardens and food deserts as an overarching document that's bigger than the park's master plan. So I think the community has spoken about community gardens previously. I will also share that I have a conflict of interest just because my daughter interns at Farm to School, so I don't want to overspeak about Farm to School, but I would say that there is some community support, I think, for community gardens previously established. So that'd be interesting to see what we can keep pulling forward from the growth policy into all the things we do. I don't think I have anything else to add. Thanks, everybody that participated. I know it probably wasn't always easy. People are really passionate about parks in this town, so I'm grateful they were showing up.
Good job, Alex. Yeah, thanks. It's something that I think is sorely needed on the north north side of the tracks as well. And I'm a big fan of Farm to School. My wife has been involved with it. Most recently, helping the kids grind corn and make pancakes out of the meal and stuff like that a couple of weeks ago. And and something like that would be would be an asset up there, a community garden. I'd like to see that. You know, explore it as well and as well as steering committee. Keep it going, keep it moving forward. We've got to this part of love, you know, don't let it fall by the wayside as well. So once again, great job and thanks for all the comments. With that, roll call, Commissioner Gager.
Chair Schwartz?
For.
Vice Chair News?
For.
Commissioner Hill?
For.
Commissioner Lyons?
For.
Commissioner Walsh?
For.
Motion carries.
Can I ask one question that is of earlier? Is this going to be rolled into all the other plans when we do a growth policy update to to bring it all into the growth policy? If it's not yet executed by then?
So whether or not this one makes it, this one actually, I guess it would kind of depend how far we are advanced in the design process when we do update the growth policy, because this was more of a report of a workshop. It had a few consensus recommendations, but not necessarily as well developed a plan as, say, the parks master plan or trails and active transportation.
Can we maybe just like revisit when we do the growth policy, any plans that we want to wrap in to an update? Thanks.
Next item on the agenda, ordinance three zero five eight and ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, mending section thirty point one three of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled Official Zoning Map of the City of Livingston by rezoning property located on Alpenglow Lane and legally described as parcel five B, acres three three one point two nine and parcel one D, acres eight zero point seven one and in SO eight two O two R ten, I think the E, B M M County of Park, State of Montana, COS two nine zero seven RB from light industrial to mixed use. Mr. Gager?
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. The item before you is a rezoning that was requested by the owner of both parcels and the ordinance was heard by the Consolidated Land Use Board, and I will turn it over to Planning Director Jennifer Seaberson for more details on the application as well as the process before you, Jen.
Before that, any expertise or conflict of interest regarding this ordinance?
I have an expertise. Yep. So on July sixth, twenty twenty three, I was in an event at the Hospital Livingston Hospital and Hayhook Ranch Representatives Clyde Holland and Tim Nickum approached me about a potential zone change and I Mr. Gager was there. I said, please do not talk to me about this. Like, this is where the conversation ends with me and they proceeded to carry on the conversation with Mr. Gager. I don't I don't know if they're currently involved in the project or not, but they were at the time. Do you have anything you would add since you witnessed it?
No, that accurately reflects what happened and it's my understanding that they are not associated with this application at this time, but I think that's a fair disclosure.
Thanks.
Thank you for the disclosure. Where am I?
Oh, you were gonna
Oh, yeah.
Jen? Talked about it.
Any clarifying questions? Or we asked for a motion or?
No, we need Jen.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I forgot. Jen's gonna thank you. I'm used to you being in the room. Go ahead, Jen.
Thanks. I'm I'm feeling a little out of the the weather, so I'm doing this from home tonight, but good evening, commissioners. Grant, do you want to pull up the the PowerPoint? That I prepared just to hit on some key points? Yeah, awesome. Thanks. So this is a zoning map amendment. Anytime somebody requests a rezoning or there is a rezoning proposed, if it was on the city side, for chapter thirty, it does have to go through this process. This is for tracks five B and one D on Alpenglow Lane. I'm not going to read all the other descriptions of the map that have already been read. It does not have an address yet. That's why I can't just identify it by the address. But they are requesting a rezoning from Light Industrial, which is LI initials to Mixed Use or MU. Right here on bottom right, you can see the two tracks that we are talking about. These may look a little different than what you might find on Cadastro because they just completed a subdivision exemption to realign the to adjust the boundary lines for these. So there was there was no subdivision. It was exempt from that. They didn't create any new parcels. They just reconfigured these two lots. And if you look right to the south of of half of five B, you will see the existing Livingston Community Hospital. These other two tracts of land are currently vacant. As I said, they're proposing to rezone these from the current zoning of Light Industrial to Mixed Use. Uses that are not allowed in Light Industrial that are allowed in Mixed Use and which the applicant has indicated it is one of their big desires to develop or to see developed on these properties are assisted living facilities, senior housing, workforce housing for hospital staff. And I believe also in their application, I said for hospital staff, but I believe they weren't they weren't just saying for hospital staff. They might be open to others. But yeah, for now, let's just say hospital staff workforce housing. Next slide, please. So the growth policy future land use map for these two properties. As you can see, I tried to zoom in a little bit, but you see that kind of teal color right next to that red outline. That is community facility. It is the hospital. And then these these shaded pink parcels in the future land use map are identified as mixed use. And when I say community facilities, just so there's no confusion, the future land use map in the growth policy is indicative of what the community would like to see down the road, I guess. It it's a concept. It's not regulatory. We do not have a community facility zoning district. But this is, this would be Light Industrial, which is not actually in the future land use map in the growth policy. But that that's that would be kind of the same thing, community facility in the zoning in this map is Light Industrial for this parcel in our zoning code. Next slide. Flood plane, you can see that orange trail kind of that cuts through portions of both of the subject properties. That is actually the five hundred year flood plane as it's currently mapped in our current FEMA flood maps. That is non regulatory. That means we do not issue permits for development in the five hundred year flood plane. Nor do we have restrictions or requirements. Properties that are outside of the flood plane, none, sorry. The properties, all of them, sorry, are outside the hundred year, the regulatory flood plane. That is actually on this map. You can see kind of to the north of the highway, that blue zone, that would be the hundred year flood plane, the river, you can see that's the slash marks, the red and blue, that's floodway. Both the hundred year flood plane and the floodway are regulated and there are restrictions and and requirements for development. But again, nothing on our current flood plane maps is in or or crosses these two parcels or encroaches into the parcels that would require regulation. Next slide is also in your packets, but this is just a table thirty forty in the zoning code. It's I pulled them side by side to use comparisons for the LI zoning district, which is these parcels are currently zoned LI. And then the MU, the mixed use, which they are proposing to rezone the parcels to. The the key for this, the A's, the S, the N are all at the top. Main thing to keep in mind for what I'm going to show you is A is allowed and N is not allowed. You'll see one for the hospitals. It's a special exception permit. The key thing, I think, that the hospital has indicated, the applicant has indicated that they why they are wanting this rezoning is again, for residential development, workforce housing, also assisted living. That is, you'll see the the yellow highlighted. So one family dwellings, duplexes, multifamily, any sort of those types of housing. As the parcel is currently zoned, they are not allowed. So one of the the key reasons that the hospital or the applicant is coming through is for the mixed use zoning to rezone is to allow these types of housing to be developed on those properties. Okay, next slide, please. Bring it. So just a quick analysis again, and I'm I'm happy to answer after this. Any questions? For all the criteria analysis in the staff report. I was trying to just hit the highlights. Again, the future ladies map does not include any light industrial uses, which these properties are currently zoned. In the zoning code, though, of course, we do have light industrial. It is defined in the zoning code as intended to accommodate all types of light industry, including those defined as light manufacturing, as well as business and professional offices. And then again, residential uses are not allowed in LI under our current zoning code. And the next slide, the growth policy future land use map for mixed use. That is defined as intended to accommodate a mixture of retail, office, restaurant, entertainment, cultural, and residential uses. So again, the the office is is in both of them, the allowance, but the main, the key I would say is some of the more the retail, but the residential uses. In the zoning code, mixed use is pretty similarly defined as it is in the growth policies, future land use map. In the code, it is defined as intended to accommodate a mix of residential, neighborhood scale, commercial services and offices, and small scale manufacturing. And then, of course, residential uses are allowed in mixed use under the future land use map and in our current code regulations. So again, flood plane. I am on the wrong side. Sorry, I think I did not finish this. So let me just go to flood plane. There is flood plane on the property. But it is non regulatory. And the reason I brought it up and included the flood plane map in your packet is also explained in the packet that there was just, there were a few questions about that from the land use board members during their their public hearing for the rezoning. So I just wanted to be clear about where that stands on these properties. Down is strategic alignment. I'm not going to go through all of these, but there are several objectives, strategies, goals in the growth policy that align with this request to rezone the property from Light Industrial to Mixed Use. And then next slide is basically, you've seen this several times. This is the state criteria for zoning regulations. It has to hit all of these marks. I just discussed the first one made in accordance with the growth policy. In your staff packet, I've gone through all of the other criteria and how I believe it either meets the criteria or with future considerations like permitting, that kind of thing, that it would be able to meet criteria. And then lastly, just the recommendation. The land use board, the Consolidated Land Use Board at their meeting in February, March, sorry, I can't remember, but their last meeting, they voted unanimously. It was six to zero to recommend that the city commission approve the requested rezoning from Light Industrial to Mixed Use. And for that reason, staff also recommends that the city commission approve the rezoning request from LI to MU as proposed and adopt ordinance three zero five eight. And again, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jen. Clarifying questions? Or ask for a motion, Commissioner Lyons?
If development were to occur, you know, as it's described, the potential including residential, is there any? What sort of levers or controls does the city have to encourage or ensure protection from floodwaters of structures that get built there?
Grant, may I answer that question?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, so if you want to look at your staff report and I'll also just kind of go over it really quickly. We're looking at print it. It'd be about, yeah, secure safety from fire and other dangers. It's the second one, I believe, under the criteria and guidelines for zoning regulations. Portion of the area, as I said, is is encumbered or encroached upon by the five hundred year non regulatory flood plane for the Yellowstone River. Currently, as it's mapped, five hundred year flood plane, it is not subject to flood plane permitting requirements. However, a flood study is in process that has the potential to result in a change to the flood plane designation on these properties. They're looking at all of the flood plane and areas that flooded during the summer twenty twenty two flood and are in the process of remapping the flood plane for the Yellowstone River and its tributaries and distributaries. That said, all future development at the time that the development happens, that they come in for a building permit or if it requires some sort of land use review. It must comply with flood plain permitting requirements that are in place at the time of that building permit application submittal or land use review application. That includes mitigation either by elevating structures and or meeting FEMA floodproofing requirements. So there's a lot of them, the hospital, like it was not in the flood plane at the time that it was built, in my understanding, but one of the ways to mitigate is fill. And things like that require detailed studies about any sort of adverse impacts. If you place that fill, that it won't cause a rise anywhere else in the adjacent flood plane floodway. So all of that will be looked at as development occurs on the property. Anything that requires a building permit and or land use review, and it's whatever's in place at that time. And just FYI, I believe, and Grant, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we recently heard that that the results or the first draft of those flood maps, the new flood maps, I think we're expecting them maybe in twenty twenty six, just a draft, if I'm not mistaken, but I'll let Grant confirm that one.
Yeah, we we expect to have draft maps available in about fourteen months or so.
So a permit and some degree of med- So, a permit and some degree of mitigation is required if the new maps. Show that the hundred year floodplain is within. These parcels, am I understanding you correctly?
If development is proposed where the floodplain, if there is floodplain identifying approaches, yeah. Floodway, it's not going to happen here, but just to be clear, floodway, there is no development, but because of the topography, we're not expecting any of this to become floodway.
And if it remains within the five hundred year, there is no. We have no regulatory mechanisms to require any sort of mitigation of flood danger.
I would say that's correct, because essentially, the new flood maps have indicated that there is no danger beyond that. Five hundred year. That would be the case, if they did not identify or change anything to show that there's a hundred year floodplain encroaching on these properties. And there's no development within there, then, then according to FEMA, there is not risk that needs to be mitigated.
Thank you. Any other clarifying?
Uh, question about table thirty forty, page one oh six. Adult foster care center. Uh, it has a superscript number three, but I don't see that in here. Would that generally be considered the assisted living, senior housing? Category, or is that something else?
Adult foster care, and I believe, I apologize for that, I think that the number three, the subscript is to, there's some requirements for every number of. Adults that are in there, that there has to be a certain number, I want to say it's one to three or one to four, of like a caregiver that's there on premises. So it's not, it doesn't impact the uses, but I. Adult foster care center, I do not believe, and I can look into this while you're asking other questions. I don't think it's quite the same, I don't know of assisted living identified on here, and foster care. Is, there is a definition of it in our zoning, and I'll look it up, but I believe it's, it's more um. What I'm looking for, not, not. To kind of help people with skills that they don't have, I guess, not as much of um. A health issue, uh, it's recovery, that kind of thing. Let me look that up.
If you don't mind, I'm happy to jump in, I just was looking at the definition of. Under yesterday, and personal care center is what we would generally refer to as an assisted living facility. A little bit, a step below, like a, a facility that has nurses on staff all the time, you know, like a nursing home, it is kind of that step down. Is how personal care centers define it.
Cause there's a, there is personal care directly under that, the one above that is adult foster care.
Foster care, as Jen indicated, um, there's a bed limitation, and there are staffing um, limitations or requirements that are included. So that is a, a separate type of facility.
Okay, so a senior living center wouldn't fall under that category of adult foster care.
Not as a definition, and I'm happy to pull up the Lindsay municipal code and share.
I've actually got it up right now, thank you for that, I apologize, personal care center. Facility which provides services and care, which do not require nursing skills to residents needing some assistance in performing the activities of daily living, so yes, I apologize, that is. Assisted living, I think is what you're talking about. My, my mistake.
That is approved under light industrial for that use.
Mixed use.
Mixed use.
Yeah, I should.
For adult foster care, I, I get personal care is the step down. Adult foster care is allowed under both. Which I think is what they're asking, if I'm understanding, let's say, assisted living and senior. Says right here in page eighty six, promote the health, safety and general welfare. LHC is a need to develop assisted living, senior housing and workforce housing, so workforce housing wouldn't be allowed under that, but assisted living. Senior housing, senior housing.
Adult foster care.
That's not adult foster.
If I would not consider that as adult foster care, I would think adult foster care would be like a halfway house. Personal care center is.
Like aware, maybe, like in Deer Lodge County, like where they. Like life skills, maybe, would be. Like where they need more, like a higher ratio of staff. I think, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm pulling up adult foster care.
Yeah, I'm looking too, and I. It's not technically defined. The, I don't, I don't see a definition for it, it does have the, the ratio of care to caregivers at the bottom of the table, but. Yeah, it's a definition that is not explicitly defined in chapter thirty that I could find on municipal.
There's, there is how we define adult foster care center.
I can't see.
For senior housing and assisted living.
Can you read it out loud for people who are.
Certainly, uh, yes, thank you, Commissioner, our vice chair. An adult foster care, uh, has no more than four residents, and a staff member must be on board twenty-four hours a day. And um, Commissioner Willis, to your point, yes, there are a number of areas where we need. More definitions in the Lindsay municipal code zoning provisions, and we have some defined terms that we never use again after defining them, so. That's part of the work that we're in, performing in the zoning code update over the next year.
Thank you, Commissioner Willis. Commissioner Kale?
Thank you. Mister Gager, um, so. We're hearing, and you had said that in twenty twenty six or in about fourteen months, we may have draft maps available for the flood. For the floodplain. At what point do they become regulatory?
After the draft maps are released, and Jen, please jump in here if I'm wrong, they open up a comment period. And after the comment period is closed, then the maps go through an adoption process, which. If I'm not mistaken, in the last call, I think they expected the adoption process, uh, after the release of the draft maps. Was, was six to nine months, am I, am I correct in that, Jen? You're on, you're on mute.
Apologies, um, yeah, I, it's right around there, I think they, they buffer it, just in case there's some questions about. Changes before they send out a final draft, but yeah, it's, it, it takes a good while after the draft maps come out.
I, I, I'm sorry, Doug, I, I think what we heard in the most recent call was really by the end of calendar twenty twenty six. Is when they hope to have the maps actually in place for regulatory purposes.
Jen, I think you may have covered this maybe with some of what Commissioner Lyons asked, but. In, in your presentation, you said that, and I'm, was on one of the last slides, that you, that we could. The criteria for zoning regulations could be met. In some instances with, with permitting, with specific permitting, then, then the zoning regulations could be met. Can, can you elaborate on that a little bit more?
Sure, so the one that I went over with Commissioner Lyons was um, sort of in the case for. The secure safety from fire and other dangers, um, so securing safety from, let's say, from fire, you would look at it, I didn't discuss it. But building permit requirements, or they look at the flyer, fire ratings for buildings. Enforcing those and making sure that they're in place for new development, new buildings, um, secures, effectively secures safety from fire. As much as possible, um, when you develop or build a building. Other dangers such as flood, um, if the floodplain um, is changed on either of these parcels. To something that is regulatory, um, at the time of new development, if it comes in and there is. Development proposed within that area designated as regulatory floodplain, then a floodplain permit is required, a floodplain development permit is required. And those, the mitigation measures are looked at on a case by case basis, not every, every instance is going to need the same type of mitigation. But that is how, um, you know, that, that the zoning can be secured to, to change this to allow things. For flood, um, you issue floodplain permit, um, some other ones, yeah, I've got fire and building codes, ensuring safe conditions on the parcel and surrounding areas. The next one is very similar, promote public health, safety and general welfare. And that one, again, fire and building codes covers that. The uses that are allowed. We do not issue permits for. The types of, of assisted living, that sort of thing, um, and Grant, correct me if I'm wrong, because this is kind of out of my wheelhouse, but I believe the state might have some. Um, at least inspections or requirements for that, so nothing we can include, but that is looked at. As those types of facilities, I believe by the state, um, are developed. Not so much permitting, but as far as looking at uh, adequate provision of transportation. One of the things that we have, let's see, effective, when non-motorized and motorized transportation. Traffic volumes, um, probably minimal, but during site plan review, just because they are accessed off of a major highway. And as the um, the parcels are developed, um, you know, the access. Or, or restrictions on access to the highway would be looked at by MDT. You know, it may be, I have no idea, but it may be that they look at having a service road and use the existing access on Applewood Lane, so that would sort of. Mitigate any impacts of additional traffic. Risks with collisions, that kind of thing, um, also, anything that triggers a site plan review process. Would also, um, any, I want to say right now, the site plan review. Traffic study is triggered at, I apologize, it's either two hundred or two, two fifty maybe, um, trips. Which surprisingly, it does not take all, th- th- those trips come up faster than you would think, um, especially with residential. So, um, that's, that's a way that we can kind of look at that, and if a traffic study indicates that. A, a certain development or a, a, or part of that development will. Reduce the, what we call the level of service, even though there's no traffic signals around there right now, then we can. Look at that, and our public works director, director can, uh, and or if it's onto the highway, MDT would recommend. Some additional. Allowances or treatments that would mitigate um, any impacts of additional traffic. I think those are the main ones, that, you know, the fire um, code, building code and building permit requirements. Anything that the state would license here, um, floodplain permits and the traffic studies, I think I hit all of those, but. Let me know if I made a mistake, please.
Yeah, thank you, Jen, I appreciate that, that was, that was very thorough, um. I think that's all of my clarifying questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Kale, Commissioner News.
Thanks. My first question is about that zoning use table comparison, it's in the packet and it's in a presentation. I noticed that um. Hospitals and institutions are currently allowed in light industrial, but requires a special except, excuse me, special exception permit. Under mixed use, and so I was going to ask Mister Gager, do we have a sense of what institutions mean, it's another definitions question. But. It seems.
Let's take it to the municipal coach.
Thank you.
Mind everybody again, that these are things that we're also taking notes on as we are in the process of updating the code.
And I, I apologize for not, not my definitions as well.
You don't have to have everything.
Oh, well, that's my, I apologize, I should know this back and forth.
We'll get to it faster than anybody else in Livingston, I feel like that maybe counts for something. Think anybody expects you to have it memorized verbatim?
Institution is not a defined term.
Okay, institution's not a defined term, okay. Okay, that was my first question, and then, when are we expecting the zone code rewrite, which I assume will include clarity around definitions? When are we expecting that to be completed?
Jen, do you have a current estimate on the, uh, I, I guess we'll just say when the text amendments would be. Moving through the approval process?
The, so we actually, uh, I believe the intent is to have something for you to look at. Like a, a, a early draft, just to kind of make sure we're, we're. The feedback that we've gotten so far, and the input um, is, is, has touched on everything, to get feedback from you. I want to say that's either your second meeting in May, or maybe the first one in June. I think that it probably will go before the land use board. Probably September, and the reason I say that is, we want to make sure that everything is kind of squared away with the. Current legislative updates, um, our, our consultant is tracking those, so that if we need to adjust. You know, right now, the code updates are reflective of our growth policy, but some of the things going through the legislature right now, if approved. May be a little bit outside of that, I wouldn't say they necessarily conflict with the growth policy, but we are required to follow those. Um, and the other thing, you know, when we brought the downtown master plan through, um, and it was adopted in September, I believe. September, October, um. We heard from uh, several people that, um, you know, especially business owners in the downtown area, they, that it's their busy season, and they. You know, maybe didn't have time to attend, um, the, the public hearings, so I think that we, we want to be a little. Just make sure that we're kind of not at the busiest point in their season when we are bringing it through a public hearing. That's my hope.
So Mister Gager, the draft will come before the commission in late spring. Then, the first version will go to land use board in September, and then when would the commission expect to have that in front of us?
Pending amount of provision and deliberation at land use board, I'd expect you folks could have in November.
Okay, thank you. So November.
I think for sure, and.
Then my last question, thank you, I appreciate it also, Jen, um, the last. Question I have is, do we have an estimate of tax revenue, or even like the current tax revenue of the property? Or expected tax revenue, if this would be developed to the max, it makes use.
So the, the current tax revenue off of these parcels is, um. I believe less than two hundred dollars in total, um, they're undeveloped agricultural land at this point. And uh, no, without, without really an understanding on the um, construction value of the projects envisioned, it's difficult to. Derive a taxable value and then a tax revenue.
What about the tax, the taxes that come in off the hospital?
The, the hospital actually, um, by and large, does not pay taxes.
Okay. So we have an estimate of zero to question mark. Basically.
Currently, I believe about hundred and sixty-eight dollars or so that we get off of the entire hospital and these other two.
Okay, the properties we're talking about tonight and also the current hospital, and that's a year.
That's correct.
And where does that go to the general fund, or is that like go to the state and then we get a portion of it?
Actually, yeah, it, it goes some to the state and some to us.
So we get a portion of the hundred and sixty-eight dollars? Okay. Thank you. That's all my clarifying questions, thank you. A yield.
And I have. Sorry, I opened up a public comment, um. Do I have a motion? Three zero five eight.
Best forward, I will say, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the first reading ordinance thirty fifty eight.
Welcome back, Kale, do I have a second?
Another thought is, we don't have to have a motion to move forward, I don't know, we can get clarity on the process, I don't know if we have to have a motion to open it's public comment.
Let's do that.
I, we can get clarity on the process for Mister Gager, we need a motion to be able to take public.
Cause in the past, usually.
Do you, can she rescind her motion, if you don't? Do you, can she rescind her motion, if you don't want to make it?
But you can certainly rescind a motion or a motion that goes without a second, simply does.
On percent, none of them.
Process on moving forward without. A motion. In the past, we've always. A motion and second to move it to public comment.
There have been some development applications, subdivision applications primarily. The ethos have taken public comment before moving to a motion, and so that is an established practice of the commission.
We did it with the Wellness Center too, actually. Want to point out that it's a quarter to seven, see if you want to do public.
I was watching the clock as well. Okay, we're gonna. Approaching the seven o'clock hour. Which we normally take a break, but I imagine it's going to be quite a bit of comment on this, so. At this time, do I have a motion for a ten minute recess?
I'll make a motion for a ten minute break.
I'll second that.
All favor. What she carries. Okay, this meeting of Livingston City Commission is reopened. Okay, now we're done with. Public comment, okay, next we move to public comment on. Ordinance three zero five eight.
Good evening, Commission, Les Feckles of Livingston Chamber, so I'm, I'm going to say this really fast in the next four minutes. So quite a long time ago, working with the new CEO for the hospital who is also on our chamber board. I'm discussing some of the needs in our community, when this opportunity came up, when he came on to the, the hospital. And I'm also the chair of the accessing functional needs for Livingston. And working with all of the different senior facilities that we have in Livingston for like nine years now. And knowing the needs that we currently have, also the things that are holding us back, also knowing because of what's coming for the future. And what I mean by that is we have an aging society, we used to talk about being that twenty thirty five was going to be the. The year, the magic year that we would hit that thirty percent of an aged community over the age of sixty two. And COVID unfortunately helped us with a lot of these numbers, if you look at them nationally, now they're moving that date back to twenty fifty. And people are also living longer, and by the time twenty fifty comes, from where we were in twenty twenty two. Forty seven percent of the people in the United States are going to be over the aged, so that's a forty seven percent increase. Which is incredible, so if you just kind of narrow that down to the eight thousand people that we have here in the Livingston, a little over eight thousand people. We have a bigger need facing us, we have aged buildings that currently have like frontier. And for example, Livingston Healthcare, the Health and Rehab Building. And you look at the aging of these buildings, we need something that's going to supply the need that we have moving forward. This is the perfect parcel of land that is adjacent to the hospital, like highlight. Highlight over in Bozeman that has a graduated care, you have independent living, you have intermittent. Living, then you have need living, and then you have your final movement, the hospital is right there. You can be pushed in wheelchairs, the ambulance doesn't have to go far, you can walk to the hospital for your appointments, and this was kind of like the overall. Design of what this parcel of land originally looked at when they put the hospital there, but then they ran out of funding. To where they are today with this parcel of land with. Looking forward to the future with acquiring funding for this. So you think about the places that we have in town, we're looking at infill. And we've had an, an increase in having to use Wind Rider. And the Angel Line, and there's another service as well, just getting people to their appointments at the hospital, now that the hospital is out there. So if you think about all of that as a big picture, this is the perfect parcel of land for the hospital to expand on. We also have housing crisis when it comes to workforce for the traveling doctors and nurses that visit a rural community. And this is never going to end, I mean, we're not looking at that to change anytime soon. So again, I just wanted to say, think about like this overall biz, you know, perfect picture, this is already city land. And cities own land, and turning this into the mixed use. Is the perfect answer to some of the problems that we have now. And that we're going to be looking at in the next immediate future for Livingston and Park County, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Leslie.
Hi, everybody. Good to see you in some place besides the grocery store. Dennis Glick, four eleven South Yellowstone. And I really appreciate the opportunity to address this proposal. But I have to say, to quote Yogi Berra, it's deja vu all over again. I don't know the number of times I've testified in front of the commission or written a letter to the editor. Regarding a development proposal that could affect the health of the Yellowstone River. Or the safety and wellbeing of Park County residents that could be affected by the river, but it's been a lot. I believe that neither people or property should be put into harms way. The Consolidated Land Use Planning Board has raised similar concerns. About the area flooded in June of twenty twenty two, and I think we all recall. That these floods and their impacts were featured on national evening news. Including images of high water around the hospital. And I don't think that was a good look for the city. The FEMA maps that were referenced in the planning staff report are outdated. It's my understanding, and you just talked about this a little bit ago, that new floodplain maps are being developed at this time. It seems like if you agree that if this area were at risk of flooding. Then having it zoned industrial would be a safer bet than if it were zoned residential. Then when you also agree, that it seems premature that the proposed zoning change. Would be approved without having the most updated information on the location of the floodplain. I think it would be a great mistake to leave this question unanswered before a development permit is approved. Despite our federal government's efforts to abandon the use of good science and decision making. I hope that our local government doesn't fall off suit. I would urge the city to postpone approval of this zone change until these new maps. Are available, which I understand is in the not too distant future. I made a similar, similar suggestion in twenty twenty one, about a year before the floods. At the last floods that we had, and my mind, I was kind of ignored. And we saw what happened a year later when panicked citizens were stacking sandbags and crossing their fingers. I also wanted to question the wisdom of removing thirty eight acres of light industrial zoning. Which is about the size of the core of downtown Livingston. Considering the recent approval of large subdivisions on the north and west side of town. And the proliferation of infill development in our existing neighborhoods, which by the way, I think is great. Is there even a need to, to approve more residential housing? I know that the city is coming up on the five year anniversary with the most recent growth policy. And we will soon be in the process of drafting a new one. I think a lot has changed in the last five years. I trust that the new zoning code being developed will include updated information. On the existing and projected future housing and commercial needs, as well as our industrial zoning needs. But without this information, seems to me that approving this zoning change is premature. The proposed zoning change is lacking key baseline information. And is seemingly, and I hate to say this, repeating land use mistakes that we've made in the past. That have landed us as a feature story on the national evening news. And I says, and I sincerely hope that that doesn't happen again, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
My name is Amanda Garant, and I live at three two three Southeast Street. To the folks who work at the hospital and to the seniors in our community that Wesley mentioned, I. Completely empathize, I know how hard it is to find housing in our community, it isn't right and it isn't fair. To the hospital, I was happy to read in the paper that. You guys are going to be working with Montana Freshwater Partners, they're really trustworthy organization, and I hope that you listen to them when it comes to this proposal. But like Dennis brought up, I too am nervous that we are. Talking about changing this zoning now, before we know what the updated FEMA map is going to be. Permits issued in the next two years in the meantime, could have huge impacts on our community. And what I would like to know is some clarity on how changing this zoning to mixed use. From light industrial will impact the amount of impervious surfaces. So if mixed use zoning does lead to more impervious surfaces, I believe that this is going to have a big negative impact for those of us who live on the east side of town. When I looked at FEMA's current flood map, I counted roughly three hundred homes within the city limit. That are in that FEMA designated five hundred year flood zone. That's that tan area that Jen had mentioned in those, in her report. And without diving deep into like the merits of this map and how it came to be and how it's going to change in the future, that's. Undeniably, a huge amount of homes in our community. On my block alone on Southeast Street, we've got three retired workers who are three retired widows or widowers. Who live on their own on fixed income, three young families with children, and five working professional couples of various ages. And we also have nine dogs on our block, which I think is more important. Most of these three hundred homes in this area have been here for decades, some like mine for a hundred and twenty years. And so if high water can't dissipate in those fields that the hospital currently owns east of the bridge because of new infrastructure, my question is, where is it going to go? And it has to go somewhere, so when it comes to the Yellowstone River, one's actions don't only impact those of you downstream. And I believe that we should wait for new maps before we talk about rezoning this area.
Thank you.
Patricia Graybo, two oh four East Calendar Street, I bet you. Sometimes we have myopia, myopia, and we don't realize that's exactly what we're doing. But the area that you are considering, I was on the city commission. When it was annexed, the whole Watson subdivision was annexed into the city, as well as the Yellowstone Preserve. And those annexations took the entire properties into consideration rather than a little. One area. And the intelligent thing that happened, and I think I'll get that map to you. Thing that happened with the Watson subdivision, which also includes a view shed. From Sacagawea Park, that's a huge area that was annexed into the city at the time. And there was one intelligent thing going on, I've spent my life in urban planning. And that was cluster zoning, so we built. The original Watson subdivision was that you had houses closer to each other, but then you could all land. That was out from those houses, so you could raise. The, the. Land under them, so they wouldn't, the properties wouldn't flood. Then the Watsons came along and they donated. The money, they land to the. To the hospital and we began the hospital, then suddenly, we are faced with a map. Which is this little part of an entire annexation. And, and we're talking about developing this little part which is in the floodplain. Now I voted against. I voted against the Yellowstone Preserve, and the single descending vote, and boy, did I get heck for that one. But because I knew it was going to, those houses were going to go downstream, and they would have. The last one. Now you have a myopia. Oh, here's the hospital, now we're not housing here. And we're not looking at the entire area that was annexed. With the idea of cluster zoning. And cluster development in that whole area. It does, what you're looking at right now doesn't take into the consideration, doesn't take into, the floodplain doesn't take. Into consideration of those, but the view shed, it can, it considers none. Of the original Watson. Intelligence subdivision, I actually voted for the Watson subdivision. But what you're looking at is a little parcel, which is in the floodplain. And not taking into consideration the entire area we annexed, this is way premature. This is a smart city commission, that is a smart city manager, we have a smart planner. And it's time we, we lived up to the kind of intelligence. And look at the history of this thing the way we should, and take the whole thing into consideration rather than. You are way too early to even consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia.
Hey Greg, are you keeping time? Thank you.
Lyndon Moore, one thirteen South M Street. And. I am not sure if this area that you are looking at flooded in twenty twenty two. In which case is the five hundred year flood expected five hundred years from now? Or did it last flood three hundred years ago and we're. Or four hundred years ago, and the five hundred year criteria is going to hit us soon, so I. Think that should be explained before we consider putting anything there, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment in the room?
Good evening, my name is Rick Ojola. Twenty four eighty two Annie Street, Bozeman, Montana, representing Livingston Healthcare. I've been helping the hospital work through. This process of evaluating the land that they presently have. And looking at zoning and, and what would make some sense. The concern about flooding is real, understand that. But there are a large portion of those two parcels that aren't affected. If you looked at that flood map, was, you know, it sounds like the whole thing is, is going to be inundated, and it's not true. Even with, with the flood from, from twenty twenty two, which was, I don't know what they call that, the thousand year flood, everybody has a different idea. So there are some areas that can be developed, in developing land, there's always mitigation that you can do when you develop. Mixed use allows for businesses on the bottom, residential on top, it's a common use. So it's not residential, that's at your highest, highest risk. There's ways to look at that development of the land to give the hospital some opportunity for their needs for staffing. I mean, that's why this first came up, will they look at other opportunities, I think so. But they're not out just to develop that land and build a bunch of condos, they'll look at multifamily, but their need is their own. Trying to get new professionals to come to town, even the physicians and travelers. That have to come to the hospital, we face the same thing in Bozeman, having traveling staff. The hospital's very, very aware of the potential for where that water goes, we have been working with freshwater partners. Doing some mapping, we actually applied for a grant with them. With some other partners, I think the county and maybe the city signed on too, but in this era of changes at. You know, at the federal level, that grant was not. Was not given, and the purpose of that grant was to look at floodwater mitigation. While that floodwater comes into that land, how it leaves, and how to control that. And not, you know, not just create a situation where we block it off and it goes downstream. That's not acceptable, I know there's been a couple of comments about that. we block it off and it goes downstream. That's not acceptable. I know there's been a couple of comments about that. Freshwater Partners has provided some information on ways to do some mitigation that allows a better flow of that water. But still allowing it to come into the land and then recede out. So it's not like we can figure out, you know, how to block it all off. We don't have an answer, you know, but that's part of the planning process. Like Jen said, anytime that a development would happen there, we would have to meet whatever codes are there that are required and also the current FEMA map. Now that may take a couple of years and, you know, I don't know that the hospital has a firm timeline, but waiting a couple of years, I think impacts them to be able to help run their organization. And I'd be happy to try and answer some questions if, if there are any that I can help you. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you, Rick.
Any other public comment in the room? Now that we will move to line. Do we have any public comment on ordinance three zero five eight online? Please come off mute or raise your hand. You'd like me to make a comment. Seeing none. Go through the room one more time. Last chance for public comment. Okay, public comment is now closed.
Do you want to start by answering one of the?
Mr. Gager, can you answer that question? I, I have a hard time defining five hundred year too as well.
Yeah, yeah, I know. It's, it is a fantastic question and really the whether we're talking about the one hundred year or the five hundred year, we're really just talking about the probability of a flood event. And so a flood event that has a one percent chance of occurring is what's known as the one hundred year flood. Because, you know, it would happen one percent of the time, one out of those hundred years. A five hundred year flood actually is just a flood that has a point two percent chance of occurring because point two is, you know, one five hundred. Hopefully that provides some clarification to the commission.
It starts today. Basically, all these developments will start today.
Can I add some statistics to that? Statistically, if you have a one hundred year flood in, let's say we had a five hundred year flood in two thousand and twenty-two. That has no impact on the probability of that flood happening in two thousand and twenty-three. You were kind of talking about like, we're three hundred years in, doesn't, that, it doesn't matter what's happened in the past. It's the probability each year. And that year has a discrete probability of it happening at these different levels.
Yeah, it's not a running plot. I know. It's, it resets every year.
We, we could get ten five hundred year floods in a row if we were just on that street.
Thank you. Do I need to move on with the motion before discussion? Would like to go first on discussion.
Well, can we actually, one more clarifying point? Do you have access to the pictures of the parcel when it flooded? Because that was, I know there's some in City Hall from like a hundred years ago, but that was brought up, like whether it would flood or not, and I think that could just be illuminating. Since it's been a few years.
Yeah, in my mind, I can see it, but.
I mean, yeah, like we know.
I am looking commissioner, unfortunately, this computer for security reasons doesn't have access to our public drive where we keep those photographs. So unfortunately I would have to run over to City Hall or have staff number downloads.
I don't know if the commission thinks that's necessary. I mean, I have some memory.
I'll see if Jen can fly and locate them on the public. There you go.
Oh yay, city planner.
Is it in a pretty obvious file path?
Yeah, I believe that there's just a flood pictures.
Okay, I'll, I'll dig around.
Thank you.
Meanwhile.
I don't need the floor. I just was wondering if we could, since that was brought up.
Did you have your hand up first, Mr. Willock?
I did.
Please.
Chair Schwartz, so I have slightly different concern. Mr. Gager, I asked Mr. Gager last week for breakdown of the types of zoning that we have in the city and their approximate aggregate acreages. And there's fourteen different types, R one, R two, light industrial, mixed use, whatever. The city is three thousand four hundred and fourteen acres. And light industrial currently, right now is a hundred and ninety-four acres. That's five point six percent. If we were to approve this, a hundred and twelve acres of that disappears for light industrial property. And that leaves us with eighty-two acres of two point four percent of our total city for light industrial uses, which I have concern about. That that is potentially going to hamstring the ability to attract manufacturing jobs, light industrial types jobs. And so I have concerns about taking a huge chunk out of that precious resource, which is designed for us to have industrial zones and also like we talked about with R Y, we don't have residents living out there and then we have to try to evacuate in an event. So that's one thing that I have. Another thing that I have when it comes to the need for, I'll say rental properties, let's use rental properties. I had a cup of coffee this morning and I was reading a an economics forum and a brand new article from the Texas Tribune. I know we don't live in Texas, but bear with me for a moment. Austin, Texas is leading the country as far as apartment construction for the last three years and supply and demand is it works. It's not really a law, but it's kind of a law. And so rents in Austin, Texas have gone from sixteen hundred dollars to, I think, fourteen hundred and fifty dollars in that timeframe. Those are also very similar numbers to our average rate right now. It's about fifteen hundred dollars a month for rents. So they drop by two hundred dollars, let's say, in two years, three years by approving nine hundred and fifty-seven apartment permits per hundred thousand people. So it's an oh nine five percent for a hundred thousand people. So when I extrapolate that, and those are just rates, those are across the board. When I extrapolate that by the population of the city of Livingston, I said nine thousand people, maybe it's less than. That equates to eighty-three, excuse me, eighty-six housing units per year to equal the city that's got the fastest decrease in rents over the last couple of years. So now when I look at the pipeline, Mr. Gager was also kind enough to send that team as well. When I look at the pipeline, we have two subdivisions that are entitled, I think is the, is the phrase you were using, Mr. Gager. Those are subdivisions. It's North Town, eighty-eight single family lots and Discovery Vista with eighty-five single family lots. Well, each one of those is a year's worth of rent crushing development. That's the low side. Each of those can also be developed into duplexes. So now we're talking about four years' worth of rent crushing development. North Town P U D is two hundred and forty units. That's three full years' worth. And there are some things down the pipeline. There's a hundred and ten. So let's call that another year and a half worth of development for the supply and demand equation, right? That dropped everybody's rents. So on the low side, that's six and a half years worth of development that we have to keep pace with the fastest growing country in the city as far as providing rent relief through economics or eight and a half years' worth. So when I think about that, I, I just am not necessarily convinced in my own brain that a lot of development is needed either there or throughout town. I did ask for some, how many permits have been approved in the last couple of years? And I didn't see that number unfortunately, but I think we're in the fifty, sixty, seventy a year range, aren't we? So we're on par for knocking down this housing crisis that, that we've heard about already in the works. I mean, we've got at least six years' worth of houses. And they're being built slowly, but they are being built. So I just don't know if that necessarily ties into, you know, developing those properties out there that some of them were underwater three years ago.
You won't have to go in order.
I, I'm, I'm happy to.
Commissioner Kell.
Go, I guess. You know, looking at that property, remembering what happened in two thousand and twenty-two. You know, the hospital had to be evacuated. The animal shelter just down the street was flooded, you know, people nearly drowned and so did animals. And to think, and then to, to look at the proposal and, and you know, really look at that one of the desires of the applicant is to put vulnerable populations in that area, meaning senior citizens, folks in assisted living. It's really scary to think about what that might look like. You know, we are in a process of getting all of the information. And we're almost there, right? And I think it would be for us to look at moving this forward when that information is coming and to do that prior to getting all of the information, to me seems like a really missed opportunity that we would do something like that while waiting for this information. You know, we're, we're living in a changing climate. We're going to see more floods and more droughts. The weather is going to be more extreme. We've seen it over the years. And I think to just sort of move forward while actually in the process of getting the information seems short sighted. You know, I think that maybe there's some other opportunities here or some other thoughts about things that we could do. You know, I certainly would you know, be interested in looking what, looking at what like in, in terms of owning ordinance might look like and putting something like that in place until we have all of the information. And that wouldn't necessar, that could be this property and it could be other properties waiting on that information. I think that just us turning our backs and not paying attention and then allowing people to develop in areas that were heavily flooded, like we've learned a lesson. Let's learn the lesson. Something happened. Let's not just turn a blind's eye. And then also that would give us the opportunity to look at other things, maybe look at things within the zoning code and the building codes about what developing of properties like this would look like. And are there other opportunities or ways in which they could be developed that would make sense, that would be safe? You know, I know that in a lot of what we've talked about lately around development, we've talked about fire risk. But, you know, our greatest disaster of late was a flood. And I think that we need to really take that into consideration and look at it and not spring forward so quickly when literally we're waiting on the, the, the information. I mean, I think that that puts us in a really bad position. I don't want to be the commissioner that, or on the commission that moves something forward and then God forbid we had a tragedy. Because we put vulnerable, vulnerable people in an area that got flooded. Or any people for that matter, living in an area. Commissioner Roach, I, I agree with you as well, looking at what, what's coming down the pike. What is available for development at this point? What's already been approved? First, I'd like to say we've done a good job working towards our housing crisis and getting things in the pike and the ability to have things developed that can address that issue. But I think we have to look at the grand scheme of everything. And the lack of light industrial in our community to help diversify our economy, which we've heard from lots of folks needs to happen as well. Light industrial is a really good way to diversify the economy and get us doing some different thing. I will yield for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Kell. Commissioner Noots? Commissioner Lyons?
I'm happy to wait.
I'll jump in.
Okay. Commissioner Noots, you have the floor.
Um, there's a lot that's been said that I won't restate. Except for about the flood, I guess. So we'll restate some of that. One of the things I'm thinking about is mixed use, I think, is potentially one of the most dense zones we have. Housing wise. You know, and we have learned a lot between when that last growth policy was approved and today about Livingston. And this like natural space that we live in. One thing that hasn't been talked about was what happened during the flood. And so I remember pretty vividly, now probably always remember pretty vividly how staff was very maxed out and staff was evacuating the alphabet streets. Some folks tonight live in those areas where their doors were probably knocked on and they were told to leave. I'm concerned about, you know, doubling or tripling that amount of space where there's dense housing. And how will we move people if we don't have the staff to alert people that it's time to move? Also, I don't know where we're going to move them. You know, people talk about how the hospital didn't take on water, but the fact is that the hospital was also evacuated and those people have to go somewhere. And a lot of people, if I remember correctly, didn't leave because they couldn't leave. Even though they were told to leave, there was nowhere for them to go unless they were, you know, unless they had the finances available to them that they could afford to get a hotel during the tourist season in their own community. So that's really sticking with me. I think there's a lot of unanswered questions about how will we serve this community while we, the new potential community members in that new, if we, if we change the zone and also still maintain services for the people who already live here on the other side of the river. That's weighing on me, also not knowing like, will we get tax revenue? It's unclear. So far, we're not really getting tax revenue, but in a meaningful way to be able to like add positions, staff positions, which is the most expensive thing we pay for is the people. Another thing that's really concerning, it was really illuminated tonight was the lack of clarity around our zoning code and the lack of clarity around what definitions mean. And I think that kind of ambiguity doesn't serve our community well or serve the commission well. It seems to me like potential for lawsuits. Which is also weighing on my mind, like land, land use is the most common lawsuit and I don't really want to find ourselves in a preventable situation if we can get some clarity around what we allow where. So I'd love to see that clarity come in the zoning code update, you know, and if the hospital representatives have strong feelings about that, what they want to see, I would hope that they would engage in that process. Cause it's available to everyone. The hospital's part of our community. But that's really concerning and I think that was underscored for me tonight that you know, our city staff doesn't always know what things mean. So what does that mean if there's a zone change? We don't know what we're saying yes to. Like we just don't know what we're saying yes to and that concerns me. I don't want to say yes to an unknown. And you know, there's a lot of other things we've talked about when we talked about our white timber. When we talked about the wellness center in terms of what flooding infrastructure, whether it's private or public, means for our whole community.
What flooding infrastructure, whether it's private or public, means for our whole community. You know, Commissioner Kale brought this up that some states, it can impact whole communities when anyone's flooded. And I worry about. I worry about the risk to all of us if one area is flood prone and private or public residents get. You know, flooded. I worry about what that means for all of us, even though I'm on the north side and, you know. Floods won't get us over there, hopefully. So there's just like a lot of unanswered questions with this, both the location, what we've learned and the lack of clarity in our own code, which. Is in progress being updated right now. I think that's all I have to say right now. A yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Noots. You have the floor.
I. Have the advantage that I'm not used to having when we're talking about a land use decision where. My commission, my fellow commissioners have made a lot of the points that I intended to make, so I appreciate that. I'll reiterate a couple of the points in my own words. There was an interesting comment that came from the public about. Ways that we can control or mitigate impacts of floodwaters. To me. Allowing for or not allowing for high intensity development within an area. That has a tendency to flood is the best control or mitigation for. For how a flood might impact our community. So deciding whether or not to. Allow for development in a specific place is the is the most foolproof. Control of how a flood might impact said development. I see. Zoning this area as mixed use as a. A signal or an allowance of a higher intensity develop development pattern. Then would be permitted from light industrial. So that's kind of how I see this is allowing for more high intensity. Uses there. I am especially compelled. By Commissioner Kale's point about not putting our most vulnerable vulnerable populations in harm's way. And, you know, I I very much kind of share that. Concern that, you know, if we are the folks that that allow something like that to happen, that's going to really weigh on us. I think that our community really cares about a number of things. We we really care about the character of our town. We really care about being good stewards in the environment. We really care about the river. And I think that. Starting this process of allowing for high intensity development. In an area that is likely to be impacted by. The river and in turn likely impact the river. Would not be in line with kind of the the general consensus of our community. So. I'm hesitant to. To approve. The ordinance and and the change in the zoning. One, one thing in favor of. Of approving the change in the zoning would be the fact that it is. In the future land use map in in our growth policy, it's stated as as mixed use. I remember very vividly the discussion from the growth policy from twenty twenty one when we were talking about this and. I think that Vice Chair Noots and myself were not in favor of this of this area being. Not zoned, but. Demarcated as as mixed use in the future. And I think that the the points for it were the proximity to the heist, the the hospital. And kind of the transportation connections to to downtown. In in that sense, it does make sense. It wouldn't wouldn't contribute to. At least known congestion points in town because, you know, there's not a lot of traffic coming from the east. To the west on on Park Street there. But in my opinion, the danger of the flood and kind of. Respecting that that really strongly held value of our community outweighs. That more procedural consideration. So to me. And then I think another point or your last point is the fact that we're waiting on new information that could that help us make a more informed decision. And to make this decision before we have that information seems premature and unwise.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. That being said, there's not a whole lot more I can add except. I'm not comfortable until I see an updated flood map as well. And one thing, though, that did open my eyes quite a bit is, you know. From freshwater partners. Study on that and if developed, you know, following. Historic channels and stuff like that, where to take that water if we do have a flood, can we retain it? You know, during a flood and not make things worse downstream or upstream as well. But it's, you know, it's not regulatory, but I think a very, very. Good tool for the future. But yeah, I share concerns. Everybody's concerned. Health and safety as well. I, you know, it is twenty twenty five, we have the technology to build up above floods, but. Somebody brought up impervious surfaces. That's where I see nothing but a parking lot. Where does that water go? You know, and I'd feel a lot more com- comfortable changing zoning once I know. More about. You know, the. The updated flood maps, which is not that far. We're looking at the end of twenty twenty six. So. That's where I am on this at at this moment, so.
Can I add one thing that I did forget?
Please do. I I yield, I yield.
Public works. One thing that we've talked about, I don't know if we've talked about it as a body of this five, but. There's been ongoing conversations about. Getting, you know, the infrastructure across the river. And it's not easy. So even though a developer would likely pay for the initial infrastructure, my concern is for the taxpayers who maintain that when we're talking about. Infrastructure that's either hung off the bridge or, you know, sometimes they go under rivers. I don't think that's going to be cheap. So I'm concerned about like those long term commitments. It's not sprawl in the way we've talked about sprawl before, but it's certainly an investment infrastructure, the way we've talked about. An investment in shared infrastructure. And so that's one thing. I think some of it still needs to be, when we listen to Director Holmes, I think there's some work that still needs to be done over there. To our water, if that's correct. I'm concerned about water quantity. If we start adding to that side of town, I believe there might need to be a new well. Is that correct? So we'd be adding a well. And then where is it going to go? Are we going to continue to hang it off the bridge? Or are we gonna? Are we going to start burning underground? And what does that do? Even if it said a special improvement district covers it now, like what's the ongoing cost for all of us? That's something that I should have brought up, but I didn't, that I'm. That weighs on me also. Thank you for giving me a chance to put on the record.
Mr. Gager. If it pleases the commission, Director Seaberson has located a.
Oh, great.
Fairly fairly good elevated picture from the day after the flood, I believe. Jen, are you able to share your screen?
Can you see?
We we sure can, Jen. And so to to orient the crowd both here and at home. The red box is the hospital, the yellow box is approximately Swinley Road. I'm headed out there.
Yellow line. And then, yeah. And then the blue is Alpenglow, yeah. Sorry.
How many hours after the high water? Do we know?
I could not tell you. Let me see if there's a signature on the actual.
Yeah, I was trying to say my recollection is that they flew this not long after sunrise, the day after.
The day after, okay.
It was put in the system, uh, June twenty second of twenty two.
My my recollection is it was four on the next day.
Wouldn't make sense, yeah.
So would it be possible, I don't know if her mouse or your mouse would show up on the shared screen? Can you? Point out where the parcels that we're talking about are.
Yeah, Jen, we can see your mouse.
Okay, um, if you can hear me, Alpenglow is, actually, you know what? Hang on, I will pull up. The picture and I think that will make more sense. Can you give me one sec? Okay. I do.
While Jenna's talking, I'm I'm moving my mouse along Highway eighty nine. And so there is the parcel that fronts Highway eighty nine and wraps around to the east side. A little bit. And so this is approximately where my my cursor is. And then the the other parcel again fronts front sideways eighty nine and comes out.
To the yellow line.
Okay. Can you, I don't know if you can see this, but yeah, this is. As Grant said, you guys over here. Sorry, a lot of moving around. Yeah, so you see how Alpenglow, this, the. Division right here for track five B going to the south is on Alpenglow, so that would be right here. It actually goes past the hospital, so it goes right here. So right here, it cuts up here. It looks like it's about right here. The this is skewed a little bit, so it's not a direct overhead, obviously. But you're talking about this is part of five B. I believe it goes over to right about here to five B. And then track one D is all of this, pretty much, I believe. Again, I think track, the southern boundary of track one D, if I'm not mistaken, is. Pretty aligned with the road here. That's Myers Lane, so. You're talking about this area and here, you can see the fingers that kind of mimic the orange on. The floodplain maps, the current floodplain maps. That are not out of date. They're still what we can regulate to. But that's what we're looking at is this area right here, if you can see my cursor.
Thank you, Jen. I appreciate your diligence in locating the photograph.
Yep, sure.
Apologize for the.
No, thank you. That's great, thank you. Thanks. Thank you also, Jen.
Yeah, excellent.
Yeah, do you, Grant, do you want me to leave it up or you can?
No, I I think you can stop sharing.
Any other? Any other discussion? Or ask for some sort of motion? You know, defer to. Mr. Gager on process here.
Yeah, a- absolutely. So at at this point, I will. Turn to Montana Code annotated and specifically section seventy six dash twenty five dash three zero four. And if I can just scroll down here to the bottom.
Is it twenty five or twenty six, Grant?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, did I come to that?
I'm not sure. I haven't seen it in a while, but if you're trying to find the. Like emergency zoning type thing.
No, no, I actually hadn't gotten to that one, Jen. I appreciate you. You know, really, I I guess. You know, the, here we are to to sub five A, the governing body shall consider each zoning regulation map. Or amendment that the planning commission recommends to the governing body after public notice and participation. Governing body may adopt adopt with revisions the government body considers appropriate. Or reject the zoning regulation map or amended as proposed by the zoning commission. Point out sub C, the government, the governing body may not condition. An amendment to a zoning regulation or map. And so. That that is the the course of action that the you folks are statutorily entitled to. And and then I will remind you folks, section two dash fifteen of the Livingston Municipal Code. Identifies this as an item that would require. Majority of the entire body to either adopt or reject the motion. And so three votes here are needed.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Please do.
A little bit. My question in all of this would be, is there a. Time limit or frame in which a landowner could. Again, ask for a zoning change? Is there any? Timing, time in there where they're only allowed to do this every so often? How many times could they bring this up? Does that make sense?
The the Livingston Municipal Code does not provide a a lockout period. So to speak, and and so there there is no period that an applicant must wait before they. Are able to to re-request a map amendment such as this.
Perfect, thank you.
And I, you know, if it pleases the commission, because I. There was mention of an possible interim municipal zoning ordinance to to be considered and and. It came up somewhat in in conversation with the planning director there. I I would just offer. For, you know, consideration of 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 the board and and for the community. Montana Code annotated section seven six dash two five dash three zero seven provides that a local government to protect. Public safety, health and welfare, and without following procedures otherwise required to adopt zoning regulation, may adopt an interim zoning ordinance. As an urgency measure to regulate or prohibit uses that may conflict with a proposed zoning proposal. That the governing body is considering or studying or intends to study within a reasonable time. And so. And and I I guess it's it's worth noting that the the initial. Coordinance takes effect immediately and maybe in effect for for up to a year. And so I will turn it over to the commission.
So. Maybe I'll speak on that a moment because I'm I'm the one that brought that up, but that would allow. Us as a commission to say, we're not going to allow any development in the areas which are being, and Mr. Gager. Correct me if I'm wrong, we we could. Put this ordinance in place and say we're not going to allow any development in areas that are being studied studied. For the floodplain maps until that information comes out.
Yes, I I I would just point out. That the Montana Code annotated does provide the ability to prohibit specific uses. And so, I you know, I I suppose we could just simply prohibit all the uses or we could prohibit. I've heard residential is an area of concern, so I mean, that might be a an option for consideration.
And that would be something that we would discuss and bring up as an agenda item on another meeting.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, so just.
So we have basically now, we're, yeah, we're looking at keeping it. Light industrial. Or moving ahead with them, excuse.
Yeah, that's what we're looking at.
With the light industrial, we we're not conditioning that or. At all. Okay, just wanted to make sure that's clear. Any other thoughts, people before? Ask for a motion. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance three zero five eight to amend the city of Livingston zoning code sections. Three zero one three related to the official zoning map and to authorize the chair to sign ordinance three zero five eight.
Do I have a second?
Make the clarification on that, please. We don't, we don't.
If you don't get a second, it just dies.
We don't need any further motion anymore. Okay. We don't have to. Can we get clarity on if we need to do affirmative motions?
Uh, no, I, I, as, um, I read under Montana code annotated, you folks have the ability to adopt, adopt with revisions or reject. And so, uh, a motion to reject is a suitable motion in this instance.
Or if it doesn't get seconded, that just dies.
Exactly, yeah.
Right, so.
Okay.
One way. I'll, I'll give you the opportunity to amend or. Uh.
Go rescind and make.
Oh, rescind and make a new motion.
I will rescind my motion. And I will replace that with, I move to not approve the first reading of ordinance three zero five eight. To amend the city of Livingston zoning code, section three zero dot one three related to official zoning map. And to not authorize the chair to sign ordinance three zero five eight. Does that read correctly with not signing? And reject? As opposed to not approve?
Not approve or reject?
At the statutory language, I believe, was reject.
Reject, okay. Would you reject? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Lyons. Little call, please.
Chair Schwartz.
One second, I got for your. Four.
Vice Chair Nitz.
Four.
Commissioner Kell.
Four.
Commissioner Lyons.
Four.
Commissioner Milch.
Four.
Will we have a, will we have a second reading of something that's rejected once?
No.
And.
Motion carries. Moving on to next action item. Resolution number five ones, five seven, route, resolution, city of Livingston, Montana. Annexing the parcel at thirty-eight Loves Lane, Gager.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz, the item for the commission is the annexation of a parcel at thirty-eight Loves Lane. As requested by the owner of the parcel. The, the parcel, the subject parcel is not currently in city limits, but is adjacent to, uh, city utilities. And has been, um, proposed as the site of a USDA facility. Uh, should it be annexed and subsequently developed, and so, uh, I will stand for any questions the commission may have.
Missioners, any clarifying comments?
Yeah.
I, I have questions about the roads, that maybe that plays more into.
Good discussion.
Maybe that's more discussion, but.
Sounds like it to me.
Yeah. I have some thoughts and concerns.
So just basically, if you don't understand what the heck we're doing.
Then maybe like, maybe can we see it on a map? Mm-hmm. For the public.
Yeah, that would help.
Thank you, Vice Chair Nitz.
And then I'll open up for your own public comment.
I'd do like a good visual. Yeah.
Not yet, we told the maps up. We all know what we're talking about.
So the subject parcel is highlighted in the black line, uh, Interstate ninety, lies directly to the north. Loves Lane, uh, lies directly to the south. And, uh, Miller Lane to the east, the current city boundary, um, comes up Loves Lane. And then moves across, uh, Miller, um, diagonally from the, the corner of this parcel. Um, or the subject parcel, uh, the parcel directly to the east is not currently in city limits. And is home to a, um, that's a storage unit. Facility, and, uh, just kind of for reference, the parcel to the south. Is, uh, is, there's currently residential units and then a, um. Marijuana dispensary and grow house out there as well. And, um, so that's, that's generally speaking where we are. And, uh, the city, I, I guess, the, the question I heard, uh, currently, um, Loves Lane is a city road up until the intersection with Miller Lane. And then it turns into a county road, um, to the west of Miller Lane.
Yeah, at this time, I'll open up public comment to, um, resolution, um, fifty-one fifty-seven, any public comment?
Vinmar, one thirteen South M Street. So this, um, I'm very familiar with this property, there's a friend of mine renting it right now. And that Loves Lane. The, okay, the, the site is supposed to be developed to be a Livingston USDA site. That would accommodate approximately, approximately sixty employees. That is a one-way street, it's very narrow. I don't even know where they're going to fit all this stuff that they're talking about. In this I M E G memo that is related to this. Um. I'm not sure everything is addressed here, but. There is like no room to do what they're talking about. Um, with the current streets, the way that they are, and I'm not sure that that has been addressed. So, that's my concern right at the moment.
Thank you, Lita.
Good evening, my name's Janie Adams, I live at seventy-six Canyon Drive, which intersects Love's Lane. Um, I'd like to bring your attention, the notary certification on the petition for annexation form, page one twenty-three, packet. I myself am a notary for state of Montana, and the certification is not filled out correctly. And I, therefore, my opinion is, um, that it cannot be accepted. Um, on this form, you'll notice at the bottom, um, there's an area where the notary has filled this out. And the section at the top is where the, um. It's the, the signature has filled out their name.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I have an example of what it should like, this is directly from the, uh, state of Montana, a great handbook, which is public information. If you go to Secretary of State's website, search for the handbook, they have examples, this is a very similar example. The error that I'm seeing on this form, signed and sworn before me on this eleventh day of February twenty twenty-five, by Charles. And I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher it, but Piccoliola. Which, um, is the name on the notary stamp. That should say, signed and sworn before me on the subdate of February twenty twenty-five, by Robert Piccoliola.
Yeah.
There is a second error on this form. The, um, notary has crossed out state of Montana and substitute Louisiana, that's just fine. They did not address the county park. That needs to be corrected, Louisiana has parishes. My third concern with this form. I have no proof of this, but is Robert and Charles related? Because notary law states that you are not allowed to notarize a signature of a document that you, you are receiving benefit of. So if Charles is any way, um, on this, uh, receiving benefit of the annexation. He's not allowed to be, uh, certifying Robert's signature, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Um. Further, on a personal note, because I live in the area, I did write a statement. Um, I'd like to get clear about what the decision on the annexation today really means. I know the city would like to keep this decision with the range of just simply the annexation policy. But then what the decision will ultimately decide is if this USDA building project can move forward. And what we're talking about is the approval of a ten thousand square foot USDA office building. With parking for eighty government vehicles, sixty employee vehicles and storage, including hazardous material storage. I would also like to point out that the last property that was annexed into the city on Loves Lane, that promised multiple buildings for housing, has stalled. Only one condominium out of eight proposed condominiums was completed. One of the reasons the annexation was approved was because of the promise of more housing, which is something the city found desirable. However, three years later, that has not come to fruition, it does not seem to be anytime soon. Anyone can drive by and see there are no construction vehicles nor are they breaking ground. In addition, the property has become an eyesore with mounds of dirt, weeds and garbage. Further, the proper, property owner has not improved the section of road on Miller Drive that they agreed to upgrade. It remains a dirt road full of potholes. So the adjacent roads have all been paved by county or city, or however they can do that agreement. Um, and now it seems that the city has no recourse for enforcing the property owner to make good on its intent. So I ask you, was that annexation a good decision? Are you sure that annexing thirty-eight Loves Lane is going to be a good decision? You know, confidently argue that this project is going to be completed as planned. In light of the previous comment and of the current political situation of government cuts and federal jobs, I ask you, will this project be soon abandoned? Or to be partially completed? Will this be another eyesore in our neighborhood with no accountability by the property owner? What is the guarantee that the site will be developed in full, for, for, in full, per the blueprints? Are you agreeing to give annexation for a property where there's no guarantee of completion and ultimately not provide any economic benefits to the community? Because the economic benefit is at the core of this proposal. We all know we want the jobs, it will sound like great jobs. I feel that there's a responsibility to approach a decision with skepticism and consider the other side of the coin. Has the city, have any of you done an onsite visit to the property? I'd like to bring to your attention, um, some current concerns of, um, the adjacent property. Who, um, they've asked me to speak on their rehab tonight, because they could not be here due to medical reason.
Give you thirty more seconds, time's way past, but. Yeah, two seconds.
Um, I'll cut to the chase. That property owned, there's a ditch that comes from Livingston ditch on that property owner. And on the corner of the proposed property, there's an electrical pole that provides electricity to a pump that provides water to that adjacent home. And they use that water for irrigation for their livestock, they're very concerned about, um, that not being available to them, and I'm not sure if that's been addressed. Um, I would also like to bring, uh, to your attention, the minor crime that has been occurring on that street because of the marijuana dispensary. Um, as you know, there was an onsite standoff about a year and a half ago, where the neighborhood was on lockdown. The concern is you're bringing in people into our neighborhood that normally would have no reason to be there, that are very opportunistic, looking for vast open spaces. Um, outbuildings that are probably not locked, um, looking to take advantage of those areas.
Take time, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miss, I'm sorry to cut you off.
That's okay, thank you.
Hi, Leslie Feigl, I'm a chair of It's My Land, so, um, last year, we brought in front of, um, the city commission. Um, my name bad here, uh, the petition, um, for just this very subject, and. You know, this is, it's always a hard thing, because it is, if you own your land, you should be able to build on it, which you're choosing to build on it. Um, but this is about annexation to city services. At the other side of town, we just discussed this evening about something that has a ton of land that has an opportunity. And here on the other side, we're trying to cram a twenty-two thousand square foot building. So I can only imagine how many floors it's going to have, we averaged out probably two, three floors. With eighty parking spaces and all the other different outbuildings and pull-throughs. If you haven't been there, I've driven past it like three times since you put this on the agenda, and I'm just trying to figure out. Um, again, what that is going to do to our area, number two, um, within three hundred feet of any given new project. Um, the neighbor should be notified, and as I know of today, there are, um, some people that live there have not been notified. And, um, of the future plan, and it just is such a, a rural housing area. That is going to be so heavily impacted and on the road with the size of the road just doesn't. Supply, uh, you know, enough width, room, so you know, how is that going to be manipulated, um, moving forward? Um, you know, you're also talking about water with so many other projects. Um, we do have the water there, but we also have that, the water ditch that she was just bringing up, that's another major issue. Because the property right next door has horses out there, and, um, you know. It, it, you just have to drive out and look at the property, um, there is also the, um. Uh, properties to the right of it, on the other side of the storage units that are going to be affected by all of the, the extra vehicles that are coming and going. Up and down the road, and they're not happy about it, so people are not being notified of such a large project coming to a very small condensed area. Um, and if you look at Big Timber, their department act is closed. Um, other communities, Department of Agriculture has been, um, closed down, so all of a sudden, we have one that's going to pop up in Livingston. Um, what is the ultimate purpose of it, and, I mean, gosh knows, right now, it's going to be really put down the road. Because they are not spending money on anything right now, um, but, you know, for the future of this project, I think that there. It just needs a little bit more forethought on the area of which they're putting it into a very small condensed, but yet rural community. Um, and thank you so much for your time.
Leslie.
Dr. Graybo, two oh four East Calendar Street. The growth policy says that we are going to do smart growth, grow from the downtown out. We went through a battle royal over pretty for less, and suddenly we're talking about annexing. Uh, out in the five acre track kind of area. My friend Jeff Hill across the street has piling cattle, a barn. Uh. A, an irrigation for his cattle. And, and we're, we're talking about annexing this, this, this particular piece of property, I was on the commission when we first allowed. Housing out there, and then we were told unequivocally, those beautiful trees that were there would not go away, they all went away. They said, absolutely will not have anything over two, two stories high, of course, that's. That didn't end up being the case, we've got three stories high with apartment buildings all over the place. I'm sorry, but, uh, we were going to keep the original house of, of Schallenberg's, the original homestead. That didn't happen, oh, there was going to be a, and, and this list goes on. This is a very dangerous precedent, do not do this. You look out there, if you got to go out there and look at, it is the most beautiful view on the planet, it looks right. My, my friend Jeff's house looks right out of those, those mountains, you do not want to put some sort of yet another. Make-shift building. And the other thing is, in order to get to that building, you have to go all the way past Albertson's. To the taco place, and then you turn right, and then you have to go all the way around, because it's all a one-way street. And, and to, to even get to this place, it's not thought out, it is poor. It sends a dangerous precedent as far as I'm concerned, and there is absolutely no reason to do this. Thank you, please, please take this into consideration.
Kershaw. So thank you. Any other public comment? In the room, that will go online. There one.
Well, my name is Eric Garber, eleven forty-three Stoner's Drive, Bozeman, Montana. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, which usually makes me the most popular person in the room on any given night. Um, I would just like to address a few concerns that I heard, um, from the audience, uh, first and foremost, this is the first step in the long process. We haven't looked at all the road, all the utilities, we've simply verified pursuant to the city process that are already available. We haven't looked at all the road, all the utilities we simply verified pursuant to the city process that already availability of them there. So we got to take the first step. So some of these questions I think that have been raised tonight, we can answer later or will be answered later. Um, speaking to the adjacent improvements, uh my firm did that project. I was not the project manager or engineer of record for it. However, I do know that we had a pre-construction meeting with the city of Livingston earlier this month and the uh proposed improvements on Miller will be made. Anyable weather dependent. So those, those improvements are coming. Um, I just point to the. You know, the elements in the um annexation policy about efficiency and extension of services, the mains and the water are right there uh on the other side of Miller. Um, and so we're just trying to comply with that. So. Information after now I'm available for any questions um may have.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room? Otherwise we'll move down line. Okay, seeing none in the room, we'll look online. Public comment online, please come off mute or raise your hand.
Randy Carpenter just came.
Randy, you can go ahead. Randy Carpenter, can you hear me? You wish to give public comment? Anybody else online like to give public comment?
Is the volume of Grant just?
There was a few people texting me that they couldn't be heard like Erica, when she was trying to talk.
Oh, okay.
So even though his camera's off, I mean, microphone.
Yeah, this is the third time that somebody's tried to comment and then you didn't hear anything. Oh, I I can assure you, we got sound coming.
Well, because Jen, we could.
Yeah, I don't think we have a technical issue on our end. Uh, there might be one on on the other end, certainly. I can't sleep to that, but.
It looks like Tom.
I'm uh, I'm just seeing if I can make it work.
Sound good.
Thanks, Tom.
Hey Randy, are you able to? Try again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, uh again, uh it's Randy Carpenter representing Friends of Park County. Um, I'm, I'm a little bit con- uh confused about this application, this uh for uh in a resolution intent to. Annex uh that, you know, sets the clock ticking for when an annexation decision would be made. I think if I remember MCA, it's no more than two months uh from the intent uh to annex resolution. And with um, uh you know, a new zoning code. Um, being considered and will be being drafted and will be considered, you know, uh this summer. Um, it just seems like this is, you know, uh again premature. Uh, to start this process when, you know, you, you don't have a sense of. What the, what land uses you would prefer at this site uh and surrounding this site. Um, so I just, I'm, I'm confused as to why there would be uh a, a, a move to annex this. Before you have your new code. And uh the other comment would be is that, uh you know, I see the analysis of water wastewater capacity. Um, um, but I saw no analysis of uh of the road capacity and I'm, I'm just curious as to why. That was not in in included in there because it would seem that um the road currently would. Uh, you know, would not have a capacity to carry that much uh traffic. And um, you know, when you get uh, you know, your annexation agreement, I, you know, who is going to fix that? Uh, and make that right. So um, so that there was nothing about it in the, in the staff report that I saw anyway. So those two issues, it just seems like it's uh, this should be considered after you have your zoning code. Uh, adopted and um, you know, the roads is a, a very real question that wasn't addressed in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Any other public comment online? Just come off mute or raise your hand. One more time in the room, any public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Commissioners. Um, or let's see. Any questions?
Yeah.
Did you?
We're done.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks.
Um.
So I can't read my writing.
Do you want me to just like make the list?
Yeah.
Of questions and then you can go. So one is about the road. Being one way. One is about nearby developments. And the timeline of completion. One was about funding of the project. Given the current political state. And I think the last one I had was the traffic impacts. Missing. I miss them. This is, oh, this was from the public.
Well, this, I think touches on public.
Well, this was Mr. Gager was going to respond to.
Public comments.
Was there anything else I missed?
I had uh have the property owners, adjacent property owners been notified.
Thank you. That was a good one, man.
Uh, I, I, I appreciate it. I'll um take these uh kind of in the, in the, in the order that they were provided. Um, and and I think it is really worth uh remembering that. That the action before the city commission this evening is the annexation of a parcel. Uh, the subsequent development of the parcel um would fall under other processes of the city. And uh very likely the site plan review process, just based on the uh number of parking spaces included in the building. And so um that typically is the time when uh issues such as the roadway. And traffic impacts will be addressed um and and no building will be issued until those items have been satisfactorily. Uh, addressed with staff. Um, we are aware specifically of of the roadway issue. Um, we have had uh not only conversations with the, the county, but internal conversations. About how we would uh accomplish access uh and egress. Um, and I, I can say from a, a staff level, we, we do not have concerns uh with that. Um, there are uh, there are certainly ways to accommodate all of the, the traffic that this facility is expected to generate. Um, and I guess apparently uh the, there was a concern um that was raised about electric power. In a, in a nearby property um that that is provided off of this property. And certainly we would require that that power is, is maintained to all existing users uh and provided to all users. So. Um, those, those issues, uh again, as I said, would be addressed during the site plan review process that is attached to the building permit. Uh, with regard to nearby developments, uh I, I can't confirm what the gentleman uh from the applicant team. Uh, said um that the city has in fact been uh in, in contact with the developer of the property diagonally to the. Um, what southeast of, of this property. And uh, and not only are the public improvements uh slated to proceed, but it's our also, our understanding also. That the additional development, the residential development on that parcel is also um planning to move forward as well. Uh, as, as projects have uh in recent years, um you know, costs and, and interest rates, I think, have impacted the, the pace of progress on that. On that project, but we do understand to be moving forward. Uh, the fourth concern that I heard, I again, back to traffic impacts. And as uh, as the director Severson noted earlier on a, a, another item. Um, when a facility uh reaches a certain number of, of trips generated uh in the course of the day, it does. Um, require a traffic impact study. And uh, and at that point, um not only the city, but also the state have the ability uh to review that document. And uh work with the property owner to ensure that uh required improvements are in place. Um, so as not to degrade the level of service um below certain levels. So uh again, that would be something we would. Uh, deal with during the site plan review process. And um, you know, I can state that the uh notification of uh of property owners. Um, followed MCA uh requirements in, in this case. And so we don't have any concerns about that. Um, there was an additional public comment related to the notarization of the document. Um, I, I would offer uh that that is, that is something that um we would like to uh undertake further review on. And so um if it pleases the commission, uh. In addition to the recommended motion in the staff report, I may say that a, a separately recommended motion. Uh, maybe to continue the hearing on its application to a date certain. Uh, I might recommend April first, twenty twenty-five, our next commission meeting as the date certain to continue this public hearing. Uh, to if it pleases the commission.
Thank you, that's for gay.
Can I get clarity?
Sure.
Is that continue to a date certain because of the? Comment or not because of the comment, because of the error, potential error found?
I, I, I think it is um. It is significant enough that it warrants further staff review. And confirmation certainly on the, on the, on the relation um between the person who signed the document and notarized the document.
Thank you for that clarity.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner.
Can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
You, I think this would be for you. Would it makes, would it, does it make sense for us to do any further discussion if? If there's an intention of getting a pretty important clerical thing figured out before we know whether or not we.
Good point.
Uh, it's, it's really a, a preference of the commission, uh recognizing that the decision likely will not be made here tonight. Um, given the, the nature of the paperwork, I, I might suggest just as a time-saving measure for other items on the agenda that we.
Continue us to April first meeting.
Yeah, April first would work uh well with our agenda as planned for that.
Do you want to motion then?
I'd like a motion on that. Or you, did you need clarification?
I don't need.
Okay.
I can make a motion. Can I say something first?
Sure.
What's your name again? Jamie Adams. Experts are everywhere in Livingston. Thanks for showing up. Amazing public comment. Never seen that happen before in eight years. That was good. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to um postpone resolution fifty-one fifty-seven to a date certain April first. Twenty twenty-five. And continue the public hearing. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Motion by notes of second by Kale. We'll call Mr. Baker.
Chair Schwartz.
Fourth.
Vice Chair Nitz.
For.
Commissioner Kale.
For.
Commissioner Lance.
For.
Commissioner Roach.
For. We're at the next hour and a half mark.
I'll make a motion for a ten minute break. Second.
On favor?
Yeah, that was a rock star comment, yeah?
Okay, this meeting of Livingston City Commission is called back to order. Final action item today, H and item D. An appeal of the Historic Preservation Commission decision regarding a demolition permit application. For two eighteen South Second Street, Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. The item for the commission is an appeal of a decision that was handed down by the Historic Preservation Commission. Regarding a demolition permit application for two eighteen South Second Street. And after the uh, excuse me, the Historic Preservation Commission. Uh, at its meeting on February eleventh was presented an application for a partial demolition of the structure at two eighteen South Second Street. In the application, the applicant noted that the existing brick facade will be planned to be preserved and incorporated into the new building's east element. Or excuse me, east elevation. And there is uh extensive material within the application that is included in the packet. Uh, about the applicant's um plans to attempt to preserve the east facade. And uh, and also incorporate historic elements into uh whatever project may come uh after the demolition. The Historic Preservation Commission voted to approve the demolition as proposed with the condition that the existing facade be saved. And incorporated into the design of a new building. And if the facade cannot be saved, the applicant must return to the Historic Preservation Commission. To justify demolition of the facade. Following the meeting, the applicant submitted a request to appeal the condition of the Historic Preservation Commission. Uh, upon review, myself and the city attorney have um determined that the condition as stated. Uh, unfortunately is not compliant with the requirements of Livingston Municipal Code, Section. Uh, thirty-one point zero six C, which provides that. All approvals or denials of the Historic Preservation Commission shall include a statement of the reasons for such approval or denial. And the conditions to be met where applicable, whereby the applicant can make his application acceptable to the HPC. Upon review of the condition that was placed upon the approval by the Historic Preservation Commission. Myself and the city attorney uh have uh recognized that the condition. Placed upon the approval by Historic Preservation did not in fact make the application acceptable to the HPC. Um, the, the condition that the applicant must return to the HPC to justify demolition of the facade. If it is not savable, does not allow the applicant to move forward with their project with certainty. Uh, in fact, um it, it is not an approval with conditions. It is uh more technically a conditional approval. Um, that only uh pro- provides approval in certain circumstances. And so uh for that reason. Uh, I, I am recommending uh that the commission approve the appeal of the Historic Preservation Commission decision and. Demolition permit uh in accordance with the application. I would offer that there were other ways that the um condition could have been phrased. Uh, the historic preservation could have said simply, the east facade must be retained. Um, they, the historic preservation also could have uh stated that the, the facade must be maintained. Unless deemed not savable by, say, a structural engineer or a historic preservation expert. Those types of conditions would have uh allowed the project to move forward and made the application acceptable to the HPC without a further step. So uh that, that is the, the item before you this evening. I will happily stand for any questions you may have.
Any clarifying questions, Commissioner, before commissioners, before we open up public comment? Commissioner Lance.
So the. The motion that's proposed or the, the motion within the packet says to approve the appeal. Um, approving the, what would be the outcome of approving the appeal as it relates to? Like the condition. Can you, yeah, what would, what would be the outcome of approving the appeal?
Just.
I'll leave it at that.
So I, I've actually um noted to approve the appeal and also to approve the permit application as submitted. Um, the, the um commission could approve the appeal and approve the permit application. With a different condition, um such as one that I, you know, just stated, um that would provide the applicant certainty. Uh, in their ability to move forward after this evening.
So the, if we were to read. The motion verbatim. It would be an approval of the original application without any conditions. Related to what the Historic Preservation Commission stipulated. That's correct. Yeah. Okay, thank you. That's, that's my only question.
So let's, if I may, I'm sorry. Um, so let's, I'm gonna dig down a little deeper on that, clearly clarify. So if we were to approve. The motion that's on, that's here in our packet, we would be approving. What the permit application says is we will attempt to save the. That east wall. And. That's it. That's what we would be approving with no conditions of you should have. Have an engineer look at it or. What what not?
That that would be the function of the motion as provided.
As is, yes.
Yeah, to just be clear that.
No, that's good. Clarification.
Can I ask one more?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you repeat the phrase that you stated that would have been? Meeting the intent of the H P C, something about like. If a structural engineer deems it can't be saved, what exactly did you say there?
Yeah, I I I I said that the the demolition would be approved and the. The eastern facade shall be saved unless. Certified as and not being capable of being saved by a structural engineer or. That would be honestly the the cleanest way.
Okay.
Was there something? There was something else you said before that.
Historic preservation.
I feel like there was something else before that one.
There were two.
Oh, oh, yes. One one would simply be that the building may be demolished, but the eastern facade must be retained.
Or we could say unless. Demolition approved unless a certified, it was certified that structural engineer names east facade can't be saved.
Exactly.
Okay. Thanks. Okay.
That's I I wanted that too.
Okay. Thank you. Were you gonna add something?
I I I was going to say, you know, additionally. The city commission could set a dollar amount threshold that that. Somebody might incur to save the wall, which is to say, you know, encourage them to go through certain efforts and if it can be saved for. Say under two hundred and fifty thousand, but if the cost to, you know, retain the facade exceed X amount, then. So there's, there are many permutations.
Thanks. Thank you. That's my only clarifying.
Okay, we'll open a public comment. Do we have any public comment on action item D?
I'm not sure whether I'm being heard or not, but I can't.
Do you want to tell me during the room first?
Tom, we're gonna do the room first. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
I'll call it for you after public comment in the room.
Hi, my name's Chris. We own two thirty one South Second across from the project. This is my first time at the Livingston Commission Hall. Just a quick respectful comment is. It's quieter now in the hall, but it is very hard to hear many of you when that first hour when there's folks talking out in the hall. And I just would respectfully suggest that, you know, some kind of a microphone system would really. Improve the the public being able to participate. Some of you speak much lower than others and so. Anyway, just comment. I. Wanted to make, the reason I'm here is because I failed to see how the commission can consider. The demolition permit with historical aspects without having an architectural rendering. Of what the proposal, of what the project will look like. Many of there, there's three of us residential properties on that block and we all have that view. And there's no dissent about the need for the project, but I think before the decision can be made about. The appeal on the historical aspect, particularly when the city's historical preservation committee has recommended. These con, these thoughts that it's, I think it would be very difficult. Without knowing what the architectural attributes of the project will be, particularly in our wonderful his downtown historic core. The architecture is everything. And I think it would be important to know what the project entails. Historic architecturally before being able to make a decision on the on the complete demolition of the property. Thanks.
Chris, can I get your last name?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Your last.
Last name, Perri, C A R R I E R I.
Thank you.
Just wanna make a quick point that alls we're doing is approving demolition permit. Comments on the actual project itself will come later. Well. When that permit is. Applied for and submitted, then we'll, it'll go through the land, we'll go through land use. It'll go through H B C for. For design review because it is in the historic preservation district, so. Just so you know that this is strictly just for demo.
Further steps involved.
Right, right. It's the first step.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment?
I think so. My comments will have to change them because.
And you have four minutes, Bob.
Not for the record, I'm Bob Evansure at one twenty eighth South Yellowstone Street. And first of all, I'd like to thank you all for your service. I was here a long time ago and I know it takes a lot of time. Lot of energy and thank you very much for your participation. I'm here today as a former city commissioner. And what I've heard tonight and what you're talking about the motion to change is I think is what the Historic Preservation Commission was that after all. All all along. But I just wanted to say that, you know. To overturn a city committee, Historic Preservation Commission, which was a five O, a unanimous decision. I think can be a very slippery stove and set bad precedences. It opens up the possibility that the of saying that rather than the credibility. Of the commission might be damaged. And I really appreciate your discussion so far here tonight because you're not talking about doing that. I was going to say my my feeling would be if you can't come up with a good solution tonight, to have the. The applicant come back to the Historic Preservation Commission and have them deal with it, knowing what the mistake they made. Which was not intentional at all. Could be rectified. So that would be an alternative, but I think where you're going right now, with which your discussion is really satisfies the need, really look at. The facade of that building before it gets destroyed. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Rob.
Deputy Attorney, one oh four South Fifth Street, Livingston. As a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. I was. Surprised to see an appeal to this to our decision. First of all, I want to say, I want to thank the applicant for. Accepting some recommendations that that the Historic Preservation Commission made at the November meeting on the first. Application was made for total demon demolition of the of the property. They came back in February with a new submission. That's in your packet. And and it. They gave us just about everything we asked for there. Four or five times during their during their. Application, they said that they would try to preserve the facade, the facade, excuse me. And incorporated into the new building. At the. February meeting. After the motion was made and seconded to approve the this application. I asked Mr. Horn, who was the. There was some engineers and whatnot. He he said that they had to do an as-built survey to determine the. If the site could be saved or not. And I asked him, and I and I looked at the at the video again and listened to our meeting. I can't speak to the other members, but. I asked Mr. Horn if. It was determined that the facade could not be saved. Would he be willing to come back to the H P C and give us the reason that it could not be saved? Be it financial or structural or a reason they couldn't, just from my own information. Here. On page one fifty six of your of your packet. Says the H P C voted to approve the demolition as proposed with the condition the existing facade be saved. Incorporated into the design of the new building. Which we did. And if the facade cannot be saved, the applicant must return to the H P C to justify demolition of the facade. Which wasn't my intent, I'm sorry. During that meeting, perhaps I. My communication wasn't as straightforward as I thought it would be. I appreciate Mr. Gager's. Comments about what we should have said and I wish I didn't know that at the time, but thank you very much for considering this. Thanks to the applicant for. Hearing us out.
Thank you, Jack. Other public comment? Please go forward.
I'm online when you're ready.
Yeah, we'll call for online when the time comes.
Okay, great.
Patricia Grabo, two oh four East Calendar Street at the Grabo Hotel. One of the twenty hotels that created downtown Livingston. Rather than being on some beach and, boy, I'm here again. Because I care so much about downtown. That's what I'm here for. I also care so much for our growth policy. And have come out publicly and. In in every way possible to say how much. I want us to continue with this remarkable document that sixteen hundred of us. Participated, one of which was, of course, we would do smart growth. We would start with our downtown.
Patricia, I'm gonna put you back on track. We're we're talking about demolition of.
I know. So this building. And I've been on the Historic Preservation Commission. I've served there. I've served as city commissioner. I've spent eighteen years as president of downtown building, other than business association, pretty much half time. So. First of all, this is one eight, one ninth of a block. It is one of the ugliest buildings in town. It is. And here Livingston has these gorgeous buildings. That we are trying to save. That isn't one of them. And and it's. It's it's. Beauty that we're after. What he's trying to do is, I was so thrilled that we could end up with mixed-use housing. In that part of town. With a growth policy that lets us grow in our downtown that. But we're putting impossible. Things on these wonderful people who have decided to invest in our community. It's his money he's investing. And and then we we tell him he's got to have, oh, you've got to save the ugliest facade in town. Which is one ninth of the block. And and. I'm sorry, but I think he's wonderful in these. I'm so grateful that they're here after eighteen years of wanting them to come. Here they are. There is nothing, he is gonna send it back to Historic Preservation Commission and they'll say. He got demolishes. This is building is, that building is not only ugly, but it's not a sound building. So why would we force that after eighteen years of waiting for them to come home? Why would we force that on them? Why would we go through a whole process of going back to the Historic Preservation Commission? And and go through this painful process. Let's just get it over. Let him design this beautiful building that will help our other beautiful buildings. Instead of trying to save something that is ugly, out of place and has no business surviving. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia.
Elijah Isley, one View Vista Drive. I am also on the Historic Preservation Commission and. Much of what I was gonna say has kind of changed by the previous conversation that has been had so far. But I do want to reiterate some things that some individuals had said, like Bob and Jack. And I kind of want to go through our experience at the H P C, the individuals first applied, and it is a bummer. The way that this works where upon application of a demolition permit. Of a historic building in a historic district, we don't get to know, like, we don't get to consider what is going to replace it. That like puts the H P C in a really tough spot. We're there to preserve the history of our community. And so when when considering can an individual demo a building for a reason unknown, the answer is a resounding no, right? We're like, well, no, you can't just knock down a historic building. That doesn't make any sense. We feel like we're not doing our jobs in that position. And so after the first round in November, we basically said, why don't you come back with some sort of conceptual idea? As to what you plan on doing. And the applicant did that and we were grateful for that. And so with kind of a half-baked conceptual idea, we as the H P C decided, all right, let's level with these individuals. You can demo the entirety of the building, but let's maintain that front facade. Which like Grant said, they had already intended on doing, but it was kind of a we'll do our best type of promise. And we at the H P C just wanted a little bit more of a promise with that. And so we attempted to do what Grant has said. We attempted to to place a legal condition on it. That basically said. Do what you're gonna do. Build your five-story apartment complex and your restaurant, but do it while maintaining this wall. And we we want some kind of confirmation that that is going to be adhered to. And if it's not, we want to know why. And and of course, from what we're finding, we should have done a better job of making sure that that condition. Was legal and well-worded and correct and and we didn't do that. And so. I do think that a lot of this is all about precedent and I think precedent with regards to the H P C. And how we are viewed within the community, if if a decision that we have made just gets completely overridden by the. By the city commission, it kind of makes it seem a little bit like it doesn't have much clout at all, right? It's kind of like, well, if you got a no from them, just take it to the city. It's like a child asking one parent and getting a no. And then going to the second parent and the second parent not supporting the first, right? And so there's a little bit of a precedent there. And unfortunately, I feel like with the with historic buildings in our historic district, it really doesn't matter how ugly they are. If we knock down one and and allow that to happen with impunity, then it sets a precedent for all of the others. We can't be situational about each of the historic buildings downtown. And us as individuals be making the decision as which one is nice and which one isn't. The industrial tower building is a usable space as it exists right now. We're not preventing anyone from from using it for something. It it just doesn't necessarily work for these individuals' plan. And. That's okay. We're going to work with, we were trying to work with these individuals to allow for their plan to work. While also doing our job and preserving the history of our town. I think that is all. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Any other public comment in the room? Linda.
Linda Moore, one thirteen South M Street. Everything that was said before the public comment was very confusing to me because how can we? How can we give permit for a demolition that hasn't been defined what it's going to involve? I I mean. That that makes no sense to me, I I know you tried to explain it, but it did not make any sense to me. So I would strongly suggest. That we don't do that until we find out exactly what is going to happen. Anyway.
Thank you, Linda. Any other public comment in the room? Otherwise, I'll move online. Oh, please. I I'd prefer if you want now. While we're in the room. Thank you.
Eric Horn. I am the applicant. The one ninety-nine Karst Creek Lane in the Gallant Gateway. First of all, I just wanted to thank you guys for. Being here tonight, it's late, the last one. I I just, I prepared a statement and I've listened to all these comments, and I'd just like to read the statement first. And I'll I'll enhance it a little bit.
Yep, just four minutes.
Okay, thank you for taking the time to review our appeal regarding the conditions opposed. Opposed by the HPC. On our demolition permit for our proposed development. While we have not yet finalized a conceptual design, we have carefully considered feedback from the HPC. The City Development Committee, neighboring residents, and the broader community. In fact, we completely changed the design that we showed. To the HPC because of all these, all the feedback that we received. These insights have been integrated into our project performance balanced against the practical realities. Of project viability, namely, construction costs. Interest rates, market rents, and most recently tariffs. We are committed to delivering a project that benefits the community while addressing diverse housing needs. Our vision for the project is a dynamic mixed-use development. Featuring affordable housing. Workforce housing, age-restricted units, and market-rate residences. The feasibility of each component hinges on manageable construction costs. Efficient development processes. Favorable interest rates. And current tariff considerations. To that end, we intend to prioritize American-made building materials. Hopefully all from Montana. And innovative construction techniques that optimize onsite labor efficiency. This infill development aims to maximize the site's potential by blending affordable and market-rate housing. With associated parking in a small neighborhood restaurant. We believe this project will enhance the Second Street Corridor. Serving as an inviting gateway to Sacagawea Park while providing much-needed housing in the downtown district. It's just plain smart land use. The project will foster. The vibrant walking community that aligns with the city's broader goals. However, as outlined in our appeal, the conditions attached to the demolition pose significant challenges. They impede the ability to proceed in a timely manner. And unreasonably restrict our ownership rights and reasonable use of the property. More specifically. These conditions introduce design complexities. Logistical hurdles and extended timelines that add costs. Potentially complicating the realization of key housing elements that we've envisioned for this project. This all came about after our HPC meeting. We went back, we looked at everything. Money. The design, everything, and we had to scale the project back, we moved the, you know, we want to move our building away from the historical building to the north. We're making all these pragmatic decisions to make this thing go forward. And for my chair. Sure, I'm gonna say that we're gonna try to save that facade, but if the design doesn't work for it. There's no use in saving it, and I I'm sorry to say that, but it's just the brutal reality of being a developer. We have to look at all these costs. And everything, all these little things add up, especially in today's market. I mean, it costs the same amount to build this project. In Bozeman as it does in Livingston, and Bozeman has higher rents. I'm trying to make this thing affordable. I'm trying to, you know, put a workforce housing component into it, I'm trying to put an age-restricted component into it. These are all things. That are. Probably have never been done, but that's always been my vision since I first talked to Grant about this project about a year ago. I haven't wavered from that. I've tried. To figure out how we can put this. Facade into the into the project, and if you go by in Bozeman, there's a project on Main Street. They're saving the facade. You know, it's probably months behind where they originally would have been if they didn't save the facade. Every month is is construction interest, it's construction supervision, and then the logistical. You know, putting putting up braces and working around all this stuff, it's just. It's just gonna add money to the deal, and. I want to save money and I want to try to get more affordable housing into this thing, and if I have to spend money. On trying to save this facade, I'm sorry. It just doesn't work, so.
Time, I'm timed up by you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you.
Eric, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Any other public comment in the room? No.
No.
The green sweater though.
Um, you can come up, please.
Susanna Isley, One View Vista Drive. My comment is that. As an investor builder. They chose to buy a historic part of our community, knowing that it was a historic building. Knowing that there's certain things that you have to go through to make sure that your budget works out, your timing works out. They chose to buy a historic building. And now his comment is that. Because of tariffs imposed and because of expenses. He's sorry, but he should be able to rip down one of our historic buildings. And I feel like that's the point of the Historic. Preservation Committee is they're trying to preserve. Our historic buildings. And. Like what was said. If we allow it once for the the committee to just be walked over. It is just like that. The parent, you ask one parent, they say no, you go to the other parent, they say yes, and then what does that child do from then on? What do all the builders do from then on? They go past the committees. And they either pay their way through, or they force their way through. So I strongly, strongly. Ask you guys to side with the committees that are here to protect your community. And to make. Those important choices and try to. Preserve the beauty, and there's not. Downtown Livingston isn't that huge, when the town starts to grow in all different ways, once those buildings are gone, they're gone. So. Um, I think any land could be purchased, and I think when you. Purchase a property that is a historical building, you know what you're signing up for. Or you should respect what you're signing up for, unless you just don't respect rules or commissions or. Anything, and you think you can just push your way through, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Susanna. Think we've. Got everybody in the room. Um, we'll now go online for public comment, public comment now online, please come off mute or raise your hand. And state your name.
I'm off mute.
Go ahead.
Yes, Tom Blue Rock, I'm the uh I'm the Chair of the Historic Preservation Committee and and. Two other members have spoken tonight, and. I spent a little time this afternoon sort of reviewing the the hearing that we had. And I'm sorry that we made a technical mistake that. Sort of. Didn't. Didn't go through, didn't respect our intentions, I think our intention is very clear. This is probably, this could be the biggest building in downtown Livingston. And as such, it's something that really needs to be taken seriously. As having a huge effect on the context of downtown Livingston and the historic district. So. What it looks like, what it feels like, how big it is. All of those things are just as important as the fact that it's producing, producing housing, which is. I think everyone agrees is something that's needed in the community and. To the degree that we can provide that, that's important. The zoning here is virtually unlimited and limited mostly by parking, and. I'm not sure what they're gonna come up with, but we haven't seen it yet. When we went through our deliberations. I think something was clear, I think we wanted to. Allow the allow the developer a path forward where he could develop his project. Would have the creativity to to inc- to include that that. That facade in his project, but we thought it was important. And this has happened on three occasions. They talked to us early in before the before the hearings about what was important, we said, that building is important. The second. The second, the second hearing in November. We said it again, we said, we want to know what you're gonna do before we allow you to tear down a historic building. And at the third thing, we basically said. We'll allow you to do that and proceed ahead so long as you. Preserve that facade. So I think that was a very, I think the intent was to allow them a way forward. A way to develop their property, but with that simple constraint that they respect that. And again, if they can present something that's so beautiful that it. That knocks us out, but I've remained skeptical. So I think we. Need to maintain that. In whatever wording it takes, and by the way, we did ask the city staff at at when we were there, is this, is this a valid? Is this a valid condition for the, and they said it was, and I guess that's been overturned by the city attorney, but. I'd like to see that condition remain. And. If 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 they can present something that. Changes our mind, that would be fine. But. We're uh. I think I think we we need to stick to our guns. Also, in the question of money. There's ways of mitigating that, first of all. As a one-story facade, and I'm an architect and I know what it takes. I don't think that's as 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 daunting a proposal as everybody proposes it to be. It's a one-story facade, it's 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 basically. It's basically basically supported at the roof and the floor, I don't think that's or and. It's also mitigated by the fact that there's URA money for for. For facade preservation, of which this would be a perfect candidate to offset some of those costs. So until we see more, I think we need to keep that. Condition in place with whatever wording needs to happen to make that happen, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else online? Just come off mute, raise your hand. Okay, I don't see anybody online, public comment is now closed. Commissioners discussion.
Sure. I can start.
Please do. Make sure notes, yeah.
Do we have a? We don't have a. Motion or anything, right?
No.
Okay. I guess I want to like. Take a moment for some clarity first. If that's okay, to get some clarity. Um, this just emphasizes, I think, Linda's point that. Bureaucratic and government processes can be frustrating. Particularly around land use, I think, it's not always intuitive. Why we do things the way we do them and why things come in a certain order, so. I guess I would ask Mr. Gager if you could just to break down the process for. These types of decisions in the. Historic district. Why we. And how we make decisions about demolition permits, and then what comes next and. You know, maybe the reasoning why we do it that way, that state code or city code. Thanks.
Uh, yeah, a- absolutely, Vice Chair Nute, so uh within the historic district, all projects. To construct, alter, or demolish a building. That do require review by the Historic Preservation Commission uh before those permits can be issued. Um, and and hmm, you know, I I guess I'll just expand that, it's not only um to construct, alter, and demolish. Um, there are uh sign requirements as well, if if a shop owner or building owner would like to. Do a new sign or new window decals, those also go to the Historic Preservation Commission. And um and as as stipulated in the Livingston Municipal Code. Appeals of Historic Preservation Decisions um are heard by by the City Commission, so that's why we're here tonight. However, um I I. I I think it's worth pointing out. There is no requirement within the Livingston Municipal Code. For a property owner to rebuild or to provide evidence of what will be rebuilt.
Right.
Um, related to a demolition permit, and that is across the entire city, not just in the historic district. Um, and in fact, it is a uh an acceptable use of land to not. Place improvements on the land and just have an undeveloped piece of land. That is a- allowed in city code and certainly within Montana code annotated under property owners' rights, and so. While I while I understand uh the community desire to know what comes next, that is not the framework that exists within Livingston Municipal Code. The demo permit is distinct and distinctly heard and decided upon from a permit to. Design and construct a facility, and so uh within the his- within the historic district, and so. That action would separately come before the Historic Preservation Commission, to the extent that that. Development occurs within the the historic district. This is one of those properties that straddles the historic district, and so. It it's worth noting, the the action before you folks tonight really only pertains to. The brick portion of what's formerly the industrial tower building, uh the white sheet metal portion is outside of the historic district, and so that could actually. Uh, yeah, and the chain link parking area as well, the undeveloped area, and so um that area of the site actually could be demolished with administrative approvals. Um, as it sits outside of the zone, so hopefully I've answered the question completely for you, Commissioner.
Yeah, so I think um if I. If I role-play Commissioner Lyons and try to repeat it in my own words. I would say, which you haven't done tonight, incidentally, um. Property owners have a right. Given to them by state, the state. That they can demolish and have an undeveloped property. Which is why it's two separate actions. The demolition and the development, so it's not a requirement of a demolition permit. To offer the next design. Because people don't have to redevelop if they don't choose to redevelop it, right? So it's a separate, okay? I hope that that offers a little bit of clarity, I mean, I think like government's not always intuitive, but. Laws. Are are here to protect everyone, so hopefully it makes sense why. It had to come to us. Because. Land use law puts us all at risk, like every, all taxpayers, as we've learned, not just the decision makers, okay? The next thing um I wanted to speak to was, I appreciated the. Um, I really appreciated Eli's comment. Cause I'm a process person, I appreciate his comment that the Historic Preservation District. Um, doesn't get to decide what they personally and as individuals thinks is pretty or not pretty. That they're there to follow a process to try to protect. The historic buildings regardless of like their own personal feelings about each building, I thought that was interesting, I hadn't thought of it that way, but it was a nice. Again, I'm a process person, so I like the. I liked that thinking and I appreciated it. And I appreciated hearing from both. Um, Bob and Jack. About the intentions of the board and. Jack, I just want to like honor that public learning is the hardest learning, and I personally don't fault you for anything, I think there's. Nothing more honorable than like um public learning and. Sharing what we can, what we're learning with each other. I think land use can be really tricky and hard, and you guys don't deal with these decisions all the time. Um, we don't even deal with them all the time, which is why there's an attorney to help us, so. I appreciate your vulnerability coming tonight, it's a really good example of. I don't know, how to show up as a good human at a public meeting, so thank you. I. Also. Just want to like put a little yellow flag as a commissioner. I think we might have an opportunity to do. A little bit more learning as boards about like what information we can require. It just, um. It stood out to me that the applicant has been before the board a few times and I wonder if there's a way to make that a little bit more efficient. For applicants and the board, um, together and city staff, if there's a way to improve that process for everyone. I would be interested in what that could look like for our city, um.
Yeah, because this is the third time.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and they're not done yet.
Yeah, and they're not done.
Yeah, and so, um, if there's any way we can make it just a little bit more simple for all people involved, I think that could be helpful. Including our boards, like they don't need to do what they don't need to do for each decision. Um, knowing that more information will come in future meetings, um. I would also add. That I think that there's actually a lot of common ground here. I don't see adversaries in this room. I think it seems like everybody's really on the same page. Based on what we read from applicant and what the board is asking for. I think there's an easy opportunity here for the commission to. To move the intention forward so the applicant can move forward and the board also gets what they needed, um. That's my one singular perspective. I do want to say though, that one thing I really liked in the packet. This is to you all, the, um, applicant. I really liked the section on repurposing existing building components. That seems like it was a missed opportunity in other previous historic buildings in Livingston. Where other community members might have liked that opportunity to incorporate, um, materials from a different building. Into something else in town, but instead some of those materials were lost, so. That just really signals to me, well, all that you've gone through is signaling to me that you're trying to work with our community, so thank you. And I really liked that section. It's on page one sixty-one for people who are interested, um, like reclaim. Bricks, donating the community timber, I think that's just really in line with our community. So thanks for your intention with that. That's not something you have to do, but I appreciate that you're offering that because I think there'll be interested parties in our community. I'm not one of those experts, but I know they're around, um. I, I think there's a pretty easy path forward as a commissioner with some of what Mr. Gager offered us in the beginning personally. That's sort of where I'm at, um, okay, I'm done, I think. I yield, hopefully that was okay for going first.
Thank you, Commissioner Noots. Whoever would like to go next, Mr. Willock. Commissioner Willock.
Thank you, sir.
Um, I feel similar with Commissioner Co-Chair Noots. I feel like we're all really, really close to being on the same page and we're all kind of circling around essentially the same thing. We're here on a technicality of just how a condition was put. Onto an applicant. And I think that condition was actually there. I just don't think it was worded the right way, which is, this, I mean, that's, we, I say things wrong all the time, uh. I feel like the applicant's done. Well, gone above and beyond as far as working with the city and the HPC, um. I think if we honor our emissions, the HPC's intent. With our words moving forward, I don't think there would be an erosion of trust or. Or, uh. I guess power of who is doing what. I, I don't feel like that's an erosion. I think all we're just doing is just correcting. Uh, which is essentially a clerical error. But maybe that's, that's how I feel about it, yeah. Yeah, I yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Willock. Anybody else like to chime in?
I am just wanting to recuse myself, um, because my wife worked. In a kind of very limited capacity, doing some research for this project. It was paid by an applicant, um, through her. Through her job and so I'm gonna recuse myself.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons.
Um, first of all, I'd like to thank our board members for doing the work. I mean, we. We know sitting up here how much time and energy it takes to, to do this work and I know that our board members do the same thing. And I want to appreciate you and thank you for your service, um, because we're all, you're all volunteering to do it. And so first of all, thank you for that, um. I agree, um, with. Commissioner Willock and Vice Chair Noots, um, I think we are all just sort of circling around the same. I, I think that there's definitely a way to uphold the decision of the, um. The board, but also bring it into. Some language that makes more sense and will tighten things up, um. We are all learning, absolutely, when it comes to land use planning and. All of us up here doing the same thing, so thank you for, for that, um. Yeah, I mean, I think that we're just. Yeah, pretty much there, so I will yield for now and.
I echo my fellow commissioners, um, having, um, served. A number of years on the Historic Preservation Board and understand the work and the time and effort that goes in, um. And the gray areas that do sometimes pop up and do exist and that, and I understand that, um. And I also understand, you know, the developer went way above and beyond what he, they had to do at the, at this juncture. Um, with the application and, uh, I commend them for doing that even though they didn't have to, um. Lost the thought. Um, oh, I, I did attend that meeting and attended to run far afield. It was, seemed more like a design review meeting than. And did, you know, sticking strictly with the app applicant. Um, requested demo and then, you know, the condition put on it. Unfortunately, it was worded. Improperly and didn't have the guidance to. That we do right now with, um, City Manager Gager, so, um, I fault no one on the board for that at all. And, uh. But, um, there again, I think, uh. We all want the same thing, um, I would be hesitant, I would hesitate to put a dollar amount on this. I don't think that's fair, quite frankly, um. But, um, I do, you know, believe, you know, between the project engineer and our city staff. Can do this assessment without. Having to come back to us or Historic Preservation Commission, um, because they know, they know our intent and what we. Can do. With that, I yield. Open for more discussion if anybody.
I want to just ask a clarifying question because I feel like I don't have it written down correctly. So I'm looking for the motion that you stated, it was the second one, not saving the whole East facade, but the one where, um. The demolitions approved if, uh, did you say? Is it material or structural engineering?
I would say it's structural.
Okay, so demolitions approved if a structural engineer de-certifies, right? Certifies. That the East facade can't be saved? Okay. Does that meet the intent?
I think you should test run that because I almost think it's not right.
Okay, so if I said, this is, this is not a motion, this is just. Yeah, so if I say I move to approve the appeal of the Historic Preservation Commission's decision regarding a demolition permit. For two eighteen South Second Street. And approve the demolition, demolition permit. If. Structural engineer certifies that the East facade can be saved.
I, I would say, uh, move to approve the permit, the demolition permit application with the condition.
With the condition.
The East facade be saved unless it is certified by a structural engineer.
Okay, I'm gonna type because that's gonna be so much faster for all of us. Okay, approve. The demo. Demolition. Why do I always volunteer to do this, guys? I don't know. Okay, approve the demolition permit. With the condition. That.
The East.
East facade.
Can retained in place.
Be retained and in place.
Retained.
In place.
Retained in place.
Unless deemed infeasible by a structural engineer.
Okay. So I'm gonna read the first part, but when I get to. I move to approve the demolition permit. So do I need to say anything about the appeal? In the motion, or can I just say I move to approve the demolition permit with the condition?
I need to say incorporate it into the new building, I don't know.
No.
Can you?
That's a whole different thing.
So I, I, I would include the, uh, uh, move to approve the appeal as the start, um.
And then when I get to.
With the conditions.
Okay, let me just like. And it's covering up the text. Can I look at your packet at the same time?
Yeah.
Okay, like my little comment box is covering up the. How annoying. Okay, I move to approve the appeal regarding a demolition.
Application.
I approve, so I move to approve the appeal of the regarding a demolition permit, okay, I got it. Oh, yeah, I'm on it.
And approve with.
And no, I'm not gonna talk about the design, FYI, because we're not to that portion of the program. We don't talk about design. We're talking about permits. So it's not gonna be conditional on any design.
No, just their attention on.
Yes. Okay. Are you ready for a motion? Are we ready for this?
All right, we are.
We're gonna say something. You look like you're gonna say something.
No, I, I was going to say that I, I agree with your formulation of the motion. Because the alternate formulation of the motion that was proposed presupposes that the building would be built in that footprint. And would actually further constrain, and I think we would have a much larger legal issue. Because we would have been told the applicant where they would have to build the buildings.
Okay, no, okay, no. Okay, so this is good. Do we need to like check in with anybody? Do we need to check in with?
The dots are eyes and crosses are teeth.
Yep, Cassie's online, John has us online. Do we need to check in or do I just keep going?
Uh, you know, John, I, I give you the opportunity to weigh in on the motion as it was read, uh, based on our conversations. It appears to be acceptable in that it provides the applicant a path forward, um, but would you like to weigh in, John?
Uh, no, I, I don't have anything for her to say, uh, uh. You got it.
Wow, nailed it.
Thank you, sir.
And John didn't have comments. That's pretty good. So I. I think you should save the comment or save the motion.
Okay.
And then look at Mr. Gager and make sure he thinks it's appropriate.
Take that advice perhaps.
Okay.
The way to go. Putting my finger here so I know where to stop reading. Are you ready for this?
Yeah.
This is the moment you've all been waiting for, to see if I can get it. So serious, guys, come on, okay. All right, are you ready? I move to approve the appeal of the Historic Preservation Commission's decision regarding a demolition, demolition permit application. For two eighteen South Second Street and approve the demolition permit with the condition that the East facade be retained in place. Unless deemed infeasible by a structural engineer.
Perfect.
I'll second that.
Oh, man, you beat me to it. I have a motion by Noots and a second by Kale. Roll, uh, yeah, we'll call please.
Here's Schwartz.
Four.
Vice Chair Noots.
Four.
Commissioner Kale.
Four.
Commissioner Wilch.
Four. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody for your participation and sorry Patricia for. Everybody else went a field on that, so my apologies.
It's not officially over yet.
Nope, um. Our, uh. Your business city manager comments or comment.
Uh, can you tell them that the meeting's still happening and?
Meeting's still going on, so.
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate your time this evening.
Patricia.
We're still.
We're still in meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate your time this evening and with the late hour, I'll keep my comments brief with that.
Thank you. Commissioner Willock.
I think I've said it all tonight. See you on the next one.
Have a lovely evening, everyone.
I would like to reiterate that I think we have opportunity to improve some board process. I'm a little concerned about legal liability if applicants are having to bring things unrelated to the vote, um. So. I guess, I don't want to make a motion that it, um, gets put on an agenda, but is like, what's the path forward? To improve process on our boards. That's a, do you have thoughts?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. Um, when we reformulated the Consolidated Land Use Board about a year ago, we did some intensive training at that point. Um, several members of the HPC at that time, um, participated in that training. Um, but it seems clear to me that we, uh, certainly could have some further training, uh, with HPC. I would also.
Need to be mandatory too, yeah, but.
I, I, and I would also offer, you know, and I welcome commission input on this one, um. The Livingston Municipal Code section pertaining to historic preservation reviews, um, seems like it could use some improvement.
Yes.
And so, um, I, I guess I'm seeing some head nods around the room, uh, that's something that at staff level we may contemplate. And, uh, bring back to you for a discussion and direction there.
Well, because that's what I was trying to say, it's day, it's some, it's so subjective, but, you know.
Yeah, I think, no, I think, I think it would be nice if it got, um. As development pressures increase all across town, if we had some improved process so that it didn't take. It wasn't unnecessarily arduous for anyone involved, boards or applicants or staff. Um, okay, that's really what's on my mind tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Noots. I have nothing, and I have a motion for German, so move second. Okay, I didn't hear a second.
Yeah, you were. Did you second it?
As usual, all favor?
All right.
This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is adjourned at nine twenty-four.